Hi and good evening. Welcome to the March 12th Open Space Board of Trustees Monthly Business Meeting. And my name is Michelle Astrea. I'm gonna start with calling the roll. Trustee Carol?
Present.
Trustee Glenn?
Present.
Trustee Zuckerman?
Here.
And I am here, Brady is out of the country and assuming he's not logged in, so okay. So he's not gonna make it tonight. Let's go through the approval of the minutes of the February 12th meeting. And we'll go page by page. Do we have any proposed changes or comments on page one? Seeing none, I'll move on to page two.
Yeah.
Harmon?
Thanks Chair, I have one, but I haven't phrased it yet. So just a second full paragraph, Harmon noted that the increase in presence of prairie dogs may show a need to have the moratorium after the population is under control. I think what I was saying was, Harmon noted that the increase in presence of prairie dogs may necessitate a reconsideration of the moratorium until the population is under
Anything else on that page?
No.
Okay, page three. And this is a long one, we have, page three, we have four pages, the fourth page. Anything on the fourth page? Okay, would anybody like to move to approve the minutes as amended?
So moved.
Okay, I'll second and start with you Sarah.
Yes.
And John?
Yes.
Harmon?
Yes.
And I also vote yes, so they pass unanimously. Got some people coming in. We'll move on to public comment for items not identified for public hearing. Sam, are you gonna read the rules of decorum?
The city has engaged with community members to co-create a vision for productive, meaningful, and inclusive civic conversations. This vision supports physical and emotional safety for community members, staff, and board commission members, as well as democracy for people of all ages, identities, lived experiences, and political perspectives. For more information about this vision and the community engagement processes, please visit this link. The following are examples of rules of decorum found in the Boulder Revised Code and other guidelines that support this vision. These will be upheld during this meeting. All remarks and testimony shall be limited to matters related to city business. No participant shall make threats or use other forms of intimidation against any person. Obscenity, racial epithets, and other speech and behavior that disrupts or otherwise impedes the ability to conduct the meeting are prohibited. Participants are required to sign up to speak using the name they are commonly known by, and individuals must display their whole name before being allowed to speak online. Currently, only audio testimony is permitted online. If you are joining in person and would like to speak during public comment or items identified for public hearing, please do sign up at this table and we'll call you to speak at the podium. We will start with participants who signed up in advance online. Then we'll move on to participants who are attending in person and then we'll take hands from Zoom. So to start us off, signed up in advance, we have Bart Windrum. Bart, if you, oh great, thank you. If you don't mind just going to the podium, you can sign up there. Oh, thank you.
Hi, I'd ask you guys to bear with me tonight, I'm feeling my age and my vision is off.
I'll just get this set up for you, hold on one moment.
Bart, take your time.
Hello trustees, I'm Bart Windrum from Shanahan Ridge. Tonight, I'm here to scold. I addressed you last August after the dinosaur fire and learning that the root cause of our urban adjacent backdrop fires, human ignition, is neither mentioned nor examined in the city CWPP. I developed a proposal, Boulder's yellow line, I left copies with you. It turns out that Flagstaff residents are asking for some of the same deterrence elements I suggested for the Southwest City backdrop. This synchronicity suggests that we're all on to something. I invite you to join us. I've emailed with the fire chiefs, met with eight council members, three times with OSMP staff at their invitation, with my state rep and senator, with four former trustees, and sought legal guidance about a charter initiative which I may yet spearhead. Everyone's been quickly accessible, good-hearted, and generous with their time. I finally learned why human ignition and its mitigation deterrence is absent from the CWPP and implementation. Fire chief said setting fires is already illegal by various statutes and seemed incredulous that one would want more than ordinances. Fire staff said ignition doesn't fit within the National Cohesive Strategy's three areas of focus. I'm sorry, truly with respect, these reasons are lame. The ignition discussion belongs to the community and should occur openly before it. At no point has any policymaker or planner offered to take the initiative to focus on human ignition, mitigation, and deterrence, to remedy its absence from governance mindset, to influence or cause remedial action. I think I know why. That any action to mitigate and deter human ignition is impractical, quixotic, impossible to correlate with success with effort and cost. Overreliance on parsing data, not on this year's agenda. Aversion to closing a flagship trail even during high risk. Asserting a patrol ranger shortage, which a former trustee debunked. Fear of taking on encampments. I have sat with council members and former trustees who shrunk and whispered while sheepishly describing ceaseless homeless violations. What astonishing misplaced deference. More allegiance to interdepartmental, interagency, and interjurisdictional processes than to overdue action. Post-Marshall, post-ENCAR, post-dinosaur, post-Boulder fireworks felony arrests, post-miriam unnamed backdrop fires, post-Lahaina, post-Palisades, post-Eaton, post-luck-of-the-draw weather, post-concurrent Gultra, Stone Mountain, and Alexander fires, post-property insurance megaflation and retraction. Good grief. Detering urban adjacent backdrop human ignition is not some garden variety land use matter. What must it take to spark necessary, meaningful action? A fire that roars through town and kills and a withered insurance marketplace? I'll dial in from home.
Next, we have James Balog followed by Giles Trauton. So James, if you're attending in person, thank you.
Good evening, my name is James Balog. I live in the Chautauqua neighborhood below Flagstaff. And you're going to hear some reinforcement of what Bart just had to say. OSMP and Boulder in general has a terrible public safety issue with careless, malicious, and accidental fire ignitions in Gregory Canyon and along Flagstaff Road all the way up to the summit. There was a fire just last week in Gregory Canyon. It, and the recent fires in Southern California, not to mention our Marshall fire, make it plain how dangerous the situation is. Residents who realize they are looking into a catastrophe have organized into a group called FPAC, Fire Prevention Action Committee. And I am here as representative of that, of that committee as is Bart and Giles who will follow me. We are aware of many steps you can and should be taking to mitigate the fire ignition hazard. Twice, these suggestions have been conveyed to you and/or your staff in emails written by me personally. Thus far, there has been no response. Why wait for a disaster before you and the larger community you represent wakes up and at least tries to keep our beautiful landscape, homes, and town from becoming a toxic wasteland? I respectfully demand that you put this issue at the top of your agenda for immediate action this year. The funds can be, the funds can be found to take appropriate measures if the political will can also be found by you and the city council. Thank you.
Thank you, James. I'll just go ahead and add that we will have an update next month regarding the Flagstaff Corridor Management Plan coming up in the next month's meeting.
And tonight, we'll have a wildfire resilience update.
Thank you. Next, we have Giles Trauton. And if you are joining us online and you would like to speak, you can raise your hand
Good evening trustees, back again. I'm gonna start off with a quote tonight, I think it's particularly relevant. And it's from Alice in Wonderland, which kind of feels like where we are sometimes. It's like, if you don't know where you're going, any road will take you there, if you remember the Cheshire Cat said that. So I'll come back to that in a second. What are we really worried about? We're worried about a fast-moving, wind-driven, dry fuels wildfire event. The rest of the stuff, the suppression, Boulder Fire Rescue can deal with that stuff. But that's really the thing we're most concerned about, which is what happened in California and what happened in the Marshall fire. There's many things that influence such an event. Drought conditions, wind and terrain, the size of the fire front that's actually reaching the city. But the only things we can control are whether or not the fire actually starts, which is human-caused ignition 99, 95% of the time, or the density of the fuels, both the vegetative fuels and the structural fuels. So what are Boulder's goals in those two areas that are within our control? How much, and what's the denominator? You don't know where you're going unless you have a goal. How much progress have we made in those areas? How long will it take us to get there? At a prior meeting, I asked about vegetative mitigation efforts along the western perimeter of Boulder. What percent has been properly mitigated? I'm particularly concerned about area of concern 13 and 8, which are just west of Flagstaff, but it ranges from the north AC3 to AC13 in the south. These are references in the CWPP. Similarly, related to human-caused ignitions, how many non-structure wildland fires do we have on average per year? And what are we doing to reduce that number? They could be malicious, accidental, arson. The cohesive wildfire mitigation strategy actually talks about controlling human-caused ignitions as part of its three-pronged approach. I don't know why it didn't make it into the CWPP. Let's talk about risk briefly. As risk increases, controls need to increase as well. So on those high-fire-risk days, for Flagstaff, that means prohibiting access to parking areas and trailheads, stationing additional personnel, increasing DUI speeding checkpoints. There might be a dozen, 15, 20 of those days per year. Seems like we could dedicate the resources on those particular high-risk wildfire days. I also wanna mention that this morning, I attended a meeting hosted by Alexander M., I'll bastardize his last name, he's from NIST. Chief Lowry was on it as well. He talked about the hazard mitigation methodology associated with wildfires. I would encourage you to reference that presentation. Thank you.
Thanks Giles, and if you have more comments, you can email them to us. Thank you.
Okay, if you're joining us online and would like to speak now, you can raise your hand. You can either do that by pressing the raise your hand icon, or you'll see, if you are on your phone, you can press star nine. Not seeing any hands.
Okay, we'll go ahead and close public comment.
Oh, I apologize, we did just get a hand as soon as I said that. Are you okay? Sorry about that.
Public comment's still open, go ahead.
Thank you. And I see a hand from Karen Holway. Karen, you should be able to unmute yourself now.
Thank you. I just have a quick question, and I hope it's a late addition to your agenda, which was obviously published before the Boulder Daily Camera came out this morning. But I'd love to hear staff and the board comment on the new franchise that was announced on the front page of putting 12 dogs in a van and taking them to a trailhead. And I have no idea whether those people already have permits to do that or understand the rules of open space and mountain parks, but I'd like to hear staff and board comment on that new initiative that's happening.
Is that the end of your comment, Karen?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thanks. Are there any other comments? Okay, now we'll go ahead and close public comment. I'm gonna move on to matters from the board. We have two written items in our packet. The first one is about the comprehensive fee study results. And the second one is regarding the trailhead renovation status and bike rack implementation update. So I'll start, and anything else that the board members would like to discuss. Let's start with the first one. I'll open it up for questions and comments regarding the fee study.
I was curious to understand kind of what next steps look like in terms of the analysis around some of the items in there. Things like the Voice and Site program had very clear kind of outcomes. When it was talking about parking though, it talked about kind of looking at the equity of charging folks from out of Boulder County, parking fees. And it talked like, we might look at that at some point in the future, but I was curious to hear, you know, what that might look like for next steps rather than just being a note in a, in a report.
Yeah, thank you. I'm Sam McQueen. I am Business Services Senior Manager, nice to see you all. A couple things, first, I think, tonight we mentioned you're going to hear about our six-year planning framework. We do intend to look at, so you're talking about the first recommendation, the voice and site tag, that's certainly going to be a part of some of the review in these plans. We really wanna look at it holistically with planning efforts, so it'll be looped into those processes. Some of them are a little less specific, and we do intend to put them into practice immediately. So for instance, involving the master plan into, into some of our fee review efforts, that is going to be part of our annual budget process. We will present that to you in the next few months as well. Making sure that we implement the new tool for analyzing whether we're recovering costs in our fee-based programs, we're gonna do that immediately. So some of those, we'll try to flag those for you as we bring them up, just so it's very clear, this is a recommendation from the fee study that we're implementing now. And then the longer-term strategies or the recommendations, we do have to review a little bit more holistically to see if they fit within our planning efforts and they, if we have to change any codes for them or if we would recommend them overall as a department.
I'll just add too, John, that this citywide, they have a long-term financial strategy initiative going on, it's a multi-year effort. As part of the upcoming part of that effort, they are going to be a city, doing a citywide fee analysis. We got a little bit ahead of the game, I think we initiated ours before we knew there was gonna be a citywide one, so we're actually, they're actually looking to us as some of the template stuff of what we looked at, the cost recovery methods. And so our actually results will actually become sort of incorporated into the citywide. And out of the citywide, there'll be some recommendations. So there also could be some citywide recommendations that departments will be asked to explore. So that could also result in a couple of these becoming more of a next step project for us as well. So it's future projects, low-hanging fruit, we can implement that right away, part of the long-term citywide financial plan. So yeah, it could be a mix of different ways that some of these might be brought forward. But I think in the end, we will let you know which of these efforts are coming forward and in what fashion when, when they do become more visible.
And looking at the parking, when I was reading it, it read like we were spending a lot of money to just collect the money for the parking fees. Was I reading that correctly?
Yes, we are appropriately recovering costs, we think, in that program. But yes, we do spend a lot of administrative time collecting cash, and so that's gonna be one of the recommendations we look at. We do accept all forms of payment for any service that we provide. So for instance, if you buy a permit, if you're signing up for a permit online, but you would like to come paying cash, you can come to our office and do that. So we do allow all forms of payment as, you know, as part of all of our fee-based programs. But I think we wanna look at ways that we can be more efficient and whether we can look at different types of options to accept cash, because it is, it is a large administrative cost to collect the cash in the way that we're doing it right now.
Yeah. Is there a world where we would recommend eliminating parking fees?
So that would certainly be something that we would want to discuss internally, would bring forward as a recommendation if it is something that we review and it does seem like the most equitable approach before, and talk to you all before making that change.
I would also say that from the citywide perspective, parking fees is, is on the radar for the overall fee study, so there may be some recommendations overall where consistency is being looked at from a citywide perspective. So we're gonna be keeping our eyes out on, on that citywide effort to see what impacts, if any, might result in our own department-specific fee structures as it relates to parking, so.
Awesome, thank you.
Is it around the parking fees? No, no, I'll add mine later.
So Sam, there's nothing in, in any kind of code or policy that's binding on OSMP that says that the, all of the fees have to be acceptable in all different forms of payment, is there?
I believe, so I am not speaking with the BRC in front of me, but I believe it is in the BRC that we do accept if, all forms of payment. It doesn't say not necessarily how, you know, whether we have to collect it directly at the point of, at the trailhead, but it does indicate that we need to accept cash and other forms of payment.
So I'm just wondering, for, for parking in the city, can you, you can't put cash in those Park Mobile machines, can you?
So that has come up in our conversations, that is something that we are looking into with our Community Vitality Department that manages parking at other structures. I'm not 100% sure if they, if they don't accept cash or if they do, we're talking to them about whether, we're gonna have conversations with them about whether they accept it at the point of, you know, at a desk or somewhere else, a cash option. But yeah, we have not had those conversations in detail yet to understand how other departments have managed that. This was, this initial recommendation was to help us to understand that yes, it is something that we see as, as a large cost to administer the program, so we wanna make sure that we're highlighting it as a recommendation to come back and look at with other departments and understand how, how we can work within existing code, if we need to change code, if it's something that we, we need to, or want to do as a department.
And if we were to eliminate cash and go to a more computerized, automated, whatever, you know, use the Park Mobile app, for example, are there technical issues around trying to get, you know, that kind of technology in a trailhead?
Yes, and we are still getting Park Mobile. Park Mobile is the system that we use for daily parking permit sales at our trailheads. We don't have it available at every trailhead that collects a fee right now. And that is, and Lauren can always jump in if I get any of this wrong too, but, or would like to say more about it. But we are deploying mobile hotspots. You've probably seen that as a CIP project the last several years. That deployment of the mobile hotspots allows us to get Park Mobile at those trailheads so that people can access it from their phones instead of them. And typically, when we do see that, we deploy Park Mobile at a trailhead, it has significantly reduced the amount of cash that we're taking in from that area, but we still are collecting quite a bit from Park Mobile in those trailheads.
Okay, thanks.
Harmon, I just wanna comment that you're aging yourself because you will remember the days when we could feed a meter. Our kids may never know that, right? That you actually used to put money in there. Yeah, I wanted to piggyback on the question about the, the fees at parking, parking fees at trailheads. Is, the city is also, or the city council is also looking at fees with a racial equity lens, right? That's, it's bundled together. And how would we, to John's question, like if, how would we as OSBT convey an interest in possibly removing fees for, for parking? Is that, since it's down the road, is there some way that you can, can convey that? I don't know when that, that, and that project ends up happening, but, you know, I'll give you my spiel here, and I've, I've said it before, Boulder, city of Boulder is a very expensive place to live. You know, to be able to afford rent here or to be able to afford to purchase a home here, it's, it's really out of reach for a lot of people. Access to our public lands via trailheads is something that I think is a public service that we should provide everybody and, and not charge people to get out to be in nature because they can't afford to live within the confines of our community. So I just, I would like, like to have that message passed on at, at some point in time when, when that issue is taken up.
Yeah, thank you. I, I think that that conversation is probably sooner than later. I think that's one of the first phases of the long-term financial strategy is fees. So I think it's a, it's going to remain a timely subject matter, and certainly those of us that are gonna try to plug in and keep abreast of the citywide effort, we could kind of look for, what are the opportunities for any feedback such as that, yeah.
Yeah, exactly. Hi Lauren Kilcoin. We, I don't think we know yet if there's an intention around public engagement specifically for the long-term financial strategy, but I know that we, as a department, will be on those cross-functional teams and giving feedback. And in fact, we've already relayed many similar messages as part of that in our thinking about how we're gonna approach that project. And I know that the city similarly has a, an equity lens and wants to think about all of the impacts there. The other piece for us is that our parking fee structure was established through the Visitor Master Plan, so through a public process. So some of the feedback that we have given to the city as they undertake the fee review is that a change to that would presumably require a public process. And so even if the city's long-term financial strategy did not go that way, ours, ours would in order to, to change that. So our expectation and, I don't know, hope would be that we're able to engage in that conversation more broadly. So I think we're, we're always trying to balance making sure that everything is accessible and fair, and then also looking at the citywide revenue picture, the open space revenue picture, and really being strategic and thoughtful about what that would mean for, for our operations. So that's, that's, I think, what we know right now, but we would, Sam and I and Dan will all be part of those citywide conversations.
Can I dumb this down, can you dumb this down a little bit for me? When we're talking about cost recovery here, are, are we saying that if we're at 100% cost recovery, does that mean that we're basically net zero? Like, we're charging the fee and we're spending money to charge the fee, so cost recovery means we're at net zero? Or, because especially on parking?
Yeah, we're close to. We're close to. So the way that, and depending on what legal interpretation of this you read, a lot of this is governed by, by Tabor, which says that if you're establishing a fee, your goal is cost recovery, and if you're generating revenue beyond cost recovery, it's actually a tax. So that would be on the ballot for the voters in those situations, right? And our intention for parking, at least in open space through the Visitor Master Plan, has never been to generate revenues. It was really to look at cost of maintenance and, you know, actually even promoting alternative methods to getting to the trailhead versus vehicle travel. So it really has been about how do we recover costs for that program up until now. So through the fee study project, Sam did a great job working with the consultants on, okay, well, well, what are the boundaries around that? If we're netting $100,000, is that a, like, what are the thresholds? And we learned that every community handles that differently in every program, and there's really no national standard for at what point of revenue you're no longer in fee recovery and instead you're in a tax. So I think again, that's why we really wanna make sure we're partnering citywide if we're looking at all fees, to handle that in a consistent way across, across the whole organization.
Okay, that's really helpful. And so then, a follow-on question to that is, can you tell me with the parking fees in particular, what benefits, or when we talk about those expenses that are getting us to that sort of net zero so that we're not in the tax zone, what benefits are we getting, what are we providing through charging parking fees?
Yeah, it's, so it's interesting, and I'm lucky that- Yeah, it's, so it's interesting, and I'm lucky that I have both Casey and Sam here because Casey was here when the plan was adopted in the Visitor Master Plan. I'll try and then correct me perhaps, okay. Really what we were looking at at that time was folks who were driving in, in vehicles from out of town, parking in those trailheads and using that. So the prevailing thinking at that time was because Open Space Fund is sales tax-driven, the folks who live here are paying the sales tax, and so they're already paying into that program. With the folks coming in from out of county, we were looking at that helping to support trail maintenance. And so there's some language, and I started 10 years ago, I'm remembering some language that I read back then, where it was really intended to, to funnel into the trails budget to help support the maintenance of the trails immediately adjacent to the trailheads that are charging fees. The trailhead's budget is now many millions of dollars. And so we are far out, you know, we're, we're investing far more into that maintenance than, than we collect in parking fees, but the intention was to offset that cost of maintenance.
Uh huh, okay. And so now, and so in, in all of your analysis, you're looking at how much benefit is there truly? And how much is this just kind of?
Yeah, and, and we want to make sure, I mean, part of, and we were looking at many programs at the same time, right? Voice Insight, Parking, Commercial and Special Use Permitting. We wanted to make sure at minimum that we were breaking even, right? So if we were investing more in running the programs than we were bringing in, we would have been in a conversation with you all about what it looked like to raise fees in order to break even. That was not the finding of the study. It was that we are breaking even on these programs. So now it's more about some of the things Michelle was raising, like what is it, what is it the right time for? What is the right thing to do? How does this fit in with city policy and equity and climate and all of those, those other topics? So I think right now, to Sam's point, we have code guidance, and then we internally have Visitor Master Plan guidance. And so to look at changing those things is, is a really significant undertaking. And we want to make sure that we're pairing well with what the city's doing with the long-term financial strategy.
Yeah, I, I really appreciated your comment, Michelle. And I think I agree. I, I also think that paying fees can be a deterrent for using the main trailheads and so forth, even for people in Boulder, so.
Yeah, so we have many, I mean, with Parks and Rec, Community Vitality, we also need to look at actual, every June, the CU Economist bring a revenue forecast to the city. And so I imagine we'll be looking at what the economic impacts are right now and whether it's time to reduce fees. So there's just a lot of unknowns. So to Sam's point earlier, you see Voice Insight on the planning topic for tonight. You do not see a, a project to, to undertake additional parking work in that six-year planning work plan. But that is because we want to make sure that we're aligned with where we're heading citywide and that we have all the information we need.
Yeah, those are good questions, Sarah. You know, the open space tax is funded by sales tax, which is, by the way, not paid by just Boulder residents. It's anybody who buys anything in the city of Boulder. And so visitors, people who, who live in Erie but work here and buy lunch, they pay for open space. And now if they go to use the trail, they need to also pay. So that's where I think it's not equitable, that we're, we're, we're charging people who can't afford to live in the zip code to, to use our trailhead. Okay, anything else on the fee set? I'll just add, I think it makes sense to condense the Voice Insight fee structure. So I, I think that makes sense. And, and I think you, you all did a great job working with this consultant and, and doing all this analysis. So thank you for taking on that project.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sam.
Okay, and then we'll move on to the second item that's in the packet regarding trailhead renovation and bike rack implementation. You know, I've got something to say about that, but I'll let you all go first. Okay, well, I was surprised to hear that we were taking South Mesa Trailhead renovation off the table. I think that it's probably the right, the, the right decision. And I was glad to hear that it was being repurposed for bike racks, of course. And, and I saw that you're also repurposing it for Flatiron Vista, partially to address, I think, the, the toilet there and then also the parking. And I think we'll find out more what you're doing with the parking later. But I did want to just comment on what I've been seeing there. The last couple of Sundays, I've been coming up from either climbing at Clear Creek or skiing in Summit County. And I'm seeing people at Flatirons Vista park not, the parking lot's always full. And I know that they're parking where the trailer, the horse trailer parking is. And I also know that they're part, they're, they're parking on the west side of 93. But this is the first time I saw people parking on the east side of 93. And that's pretty scary to me. I also saw that, is it the Green Belt Plateau Trailhead is completely full? And people are now parking on that highway. Is that 191? I don't forget what that's called, State Highway. So they're now parking there. And then the CDOT Park and Ride is like slammed full, which we know. And I guess I'm just a little worried because it's only March and, you know, with Marshall Mesa closed, and of course, I, that, that's a great project. I just worry, like, the mess that we're going to have. And I just wonder what, what your plan is for keeping people safe.
Jeff Haley, Deputy Director for Visitor Experience and Infrastructure. I'll start out, and those are all great observations. And I can certainly say that our, our Ranger team, as well as our infrastructure teams consistently see and experience the same scenarios. Just to kind of, you know, respond to the question about South Mesa Trailhead, you're exactly right. We've, within that CIP project that was funded for this year, in fact, that project really speaks more broadly about a variety of trailheads, upgrading trailheads, addressing, you know, visitor infrastructure needs, conditions, et cetera. And so, yeah, we've, we've actually run into some permitting delays and kind of situations that we've paused that one. And in a lot of ways, too, just recognizing a variety of work in the southern part of the system, as you mentioned, Michelle. And so we've repurposed that to a variety of other key priorities. And as you described, you're, you're exactly right. We looked at a lot of where we're seeing a lot of impacts and, and extreme parking challenges and that sort of thing. So Flatirons Vista, the trailhead as it, as it is now, one of the key things within the trailhead is that a lot of vehicles, small cars, et cetera, are parking in the Equestrian parking area. And so that's a challenge in itself. It's not allowed. It prevents, or presents challenges for Equestrian trailers and that sort of thing. So this project we're focusing on, just to, to answer kind of what we're doing there, we're looking to modify that Equestrian area to allow for cars to park there, to provide some increase in parking capacity. We will still have Equestrian trailer parking within that area, but now support vehicles as well. That project is all within the current footprint of the trailhead. So we're not expanding the footprint of the trailhead, going beyond the trailhead and that sort of thing. And just specific to that area, our, our future goal would be to look at a, a more appropriate site in that same corridor that might support a future trailhead location. As you mentioned, 93 is a challenge. In fact, just up to the north, as you mentioned, that Highway 128 at 93 by Greenbelt, that's an area we've, we've already talked a little bit with CDOT just to explore feasibility of creating an entrance drive there where it's a signalized intersection. But those are all plans, just kind of with CDOT to understand what options might exist. Regarding the parking within the CDOT right-of-way or outside of the trailhead, it is a challenge. Our Ranger staff especially deal with that every weekend. Significant, you know, issues arise with, there's been crashes, there's been near misses. We hear a lot of it. And so we're, we're trying to work with CDOT for signage and other things in, in the, in the near term. But there's not a lot we can do within our agency. You know, it's within the CDOT right-of-way, we're trying to work with them. So all that to say, this, this current renovation that you see in this memo doesn't necessarily solve the full problem. We're always going to have parking challenges. Some days you go out there, there's three cars in the lot, and you go out on a busy, beautiful Saturday like we've seen recently, and they're just up and down the, the right-of-way. So, yeah, we're doing all we can at this point within our area, within OSMP property, and talking with CDOT about what we can do in the future.
Thanks for that. I, I, I am really worried about people with, dragging their little kids and running across 93. It just really frightens me. Is there a world in which we can imagine some alternate transportation? Because I, I mean, it's only March, like, the climbers are kind of out there, but the hikers are not, like, out in force and the bikers are out there. And that's also unsafe because of what's happening at the CDOT Park and Ride. Is, I mean, is that a possibility to think, oh, can people park at Fairview High School and carpool? Get together so there, you don't have 10 friggin' trail runners parking 10 of their cars and taking up all the spaces? They like, they get together and carpool first? Is there anything that could be explored in that particular way before we get to the heat of summer?
Yeah, that, that is an, an opportunity, in fact, to kind of tie a lot of these different initiatives together as we've discussed with the Citywide Strategy 7C, the multimodal, improving multimodal access. I think there's certainly some communication strategies. Just like last month's meeting, I think, Sarah, you outlined a lot of campaign and kind of almost marketing and, and type themes of how we really encourage folks to think differently about how they arrive or what they're doing, or, you know, what choices they make to arrive. So I think our staff, we're already considering this season, how we can communicate, you know, did you consider a biking? Or did you consider sharing a trip with another person? Did you explore shuttle access, like the Aldo Shuttle, for example, or other opportunities? We can certainly communicate through social media, webpage, or field notes and other means. And, and do as much, as much as we can. I don't want to speak for Janelle Freeston with our Community Connections, but our education outreach staff, that's a big part of the role they play with helping to educate and inform visitors about what options exist and how, you know, certain actions in certain situations can be, you know, considered differently. So, yeah, multi-pronged approach. But at the end of the day, the parking, we, we see that across the system. And sometimes it's, you know, we do as much as we can. I don't want to say we just, you know, acting like we can't do much, but try to use as many resources and many opportunities we can. But when folks park and decide to run across a major highway and that, it's, you know, certain things that people are just going to do. But signage, you know, communication outreach, we're certainly considering.
And unfortunately, patrolling?
Right.
Because it's not legal, is that right? To park over there, is it actually legal?
I'd have to check with the CDOT and the Rangers to know what the restrictions are. For example, county roads, you can park unless signed otherwise along the CDOT right-of-way there, unless Janelle, Janelle Freeston wants to, sorry.
Hello, great question. Janelle Freeston, Community Connections Deputy Director. So the Rangers do have, they have authority to give tickets along 93 and 128, is that what you just said? But they, they get that jurisdiction actually from the county, so, yeah.
So it is illegal to park on the highway? And people are doing it, unfortunately?
Yep.
Okay. Well, buckle up because I think it's just going to get worse this year. Do we, and I just want to say thank you for the map of where you're, where you're putting updates on the bike racks. Excited to see Cragmore on there, Shanahan and Greenbrier, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else on this topic or any other matters from the board? Okay, well, then I will go ahead and pass it to you, Dan.
Yeah, thank you. Just circle back to some public comment. I just want to acknowledge that late this afternoon, I did open up and see Ms. Hallwig's question about whether or not that, that group that's in the Daily Camera, and I didn't even get a chance to read it, I've been to meetings all day. But if you're listening, Karen, we will respond. We'll be getting back to you with your question about whether or not that group needs or, and if they do, do they have a permit? So just wanted to circle back on that. So yes, okay, we have four very interesting topics for you tonight, including some special guests that are here to talk with us, and we'll bring that on in just a bit. But we did add an item, a very quick item regarding our Chapman Drive Trailhead renovation project because it did spur a lot of community comment. And we want, and which we've spent a lot of time in the last week or two replying to everybody that did ask us a question or have some concerns. And we have found that a lot of, the, the amount of traffic that's coming into us is greatly reduced. But we did want to take this opportunity just to give you a brief presentation on, on the project and, and to clarify what remains open and, and what does need to temporarily close during the spring season for that project. So just wanted to take a few minutes of your time just to provide that sort of final clarification along with all the other clarifying information that we've been putting out over the last week or so. So Jeff's going to update us on that.
Yeah, thanks, Dan. And I just want to start out thanking a variety of staff that have been working a lot this past week and the week before, regarding this project and topic and a lot of writing and following up and checking in and that sort of thing. So just tremendous effort. There was some confusion in the community, and we certainly don't like to see that. Most importantly, we want to make sure our visitors know, like Dan mentioned, what is open, what's closed, why are we, why are we doing things and what to expect? So we thought just a few minutes on the agenda this evening to kind of clarify that. The Chapman Trailhead and Bridge Project, it really, you know, what we've seen from the community and some of the questions we've heard are really about, you know, the scope of the project. What are you actually doing? When's it going to happen? Why is it happening? What will be closed and that sort of thing? So as you can see here, it, it really stretches back to 2015. Immediately after the flood, there were some considerations, and this even predates my time with the department, but basically some considerations from the city, the county and CDOT to really extend the Boulder Canyon Trail from up to Chapman Drive, which is the project we're working on. In 2017, there was a lot of design and coordination, in fact, community outreach, that identified the trail, the, the trail improvements. It discussed underpasses, bridges, et cetera, and that's what you see built in the canyon today. In 2018, we actually entered into an IGA, or I'm sorry, 2015 was the original intergovernmental agreement where the city and the county got together and said, let's work on this. Let's talk about funding, let's, let's do this for the visitors, for the community. So it's really a regional effort to really support the things we're working on now, such as 7C and the conversation we just had about getting folks to different parts of the system other than driving. But as I mentioned, back in 2018, then we, we increased, updated the IGA to increase funding for the project, which identified, again, trails, bridges, underpasses, et cetera. But construction did not proceed at that time. And then '22, more recently, we actually identified and designed plans for Chapman Trailhead in that same region of the Boulder Canyon Trail as part of a project at OSMP that we were doing. At that time, we had this lingering IGA and this proposal or this coordination with the county to do the, the final trail project, which is a bridge. And so we basically got together and said, hey, let's work together. Let's, let's disrupt the community as little as possible. Let's share funding, let's find efficiencies and cost and that sort of thing. And so in '23, we updated the IGA for the last time to basically outline a 50/50 cost split, to share costs on this project. And in fact, OSMP, we took over the management of the construction. So you can see in the next slide, this is an illustration of, even back in 2017, we had community input sessions from the county. Again, county led this project really for this bridge. You can see the images and the mapping that was kind of presented, conceptual ideas to the community, just like we do, you know, these days with other projects. And so there was a final option to build the bridge over Boulder Creek to create a truly separated, multi-use path, separated from vehicles and that sort of thing to connect in with Chapman Drive Trail, which then goes up Flagstaff. So that's the amazing work that our community and visitors, you know, enjoy today. But unfortunately, today, they do cross that one last vehicular bridge. And I think if you go to the next slide, Leah, you can see this is just a snapshot of what you see from Boulder Canyon. That truck is turning left from, heading westbound on the canyon into the, the existing vehicular bridge. There's a car coming down the canyon west, or eastbound. And so right now, there's kind of a situation where the trailiers have to pop out from, from, they go under the underpass, they pop out, and then they go across that vehicular, vehicular bridge. And so this quick section, cross-section of what that bridge is going to look like, it's 10 feet wide, and that's it's ten feet wide and that's a C dot standard. That's a, uh, specification that must be met to really provide a multi-use path experience. That can't be achieved on that vehicular bridge. In fact, there's no separation from vehicles. And again, these paths, it's equestrians, it's bikes, it's, uh, children riding with their parents up the canyon. It's, uh, elderly folks, uh, maybe on a e-bike or what have you. So we really want to support all visitation, all visitors. And that's kind of why this project's come about. Um, the bridge in fact is onsite. It's paid for, it's built, it's delivered. You can see it coming across the vehicular bridge the other day. Uh, and just to kind of see the magnitude of the size of the bridge, uh, it, it basically takes up, again, if you consider what would need to be built to support trail users on the existing vehicle bridge, that bridge, um, just gives you context, literally sitting on top, um, almost to the vehicular bridge. So it's onsite. Um, the contractor has mobilized. We're getting ready for construction. And the next slide um, shows exactly kind of what's happening with the project. So this is an aerial image. You can see the underpass coming under one nineteen, up and around to the vehicular bridge, the current trailhead there, um, where you see the cars parked. And then the next slide kind of shows what our proposed trailhead will be. And so that's one of the confusion, um, points in the community. Uh, you know, we're paying one million dollars for a new bridge. And so the reality is the one million is actually for this complete project. Um, and that's a great question. Um, and that's one of the things we really had to clarify and we appreciated kind of the support to really paint the picture. It's the new trailhead, which has ample parking, equestrian access, picnic tables, signage, uh, accessible parking, um, landscape native plantings, et cetera, to really meet our trailhead standards. And then you can see the line work there going across the new bridge will connect to the path, um, coming up Boulder Canyon. Um, safely without interfering or interacting with the vehicles coming in and out of that wedding event venue, et cetera. So even in this diagram, this is, like I said, we, we started these plans in twenty-two, uh, or even before that, in fact. And so, um, even in this exhibit, we said, bridge by others, because at that time, the county was gonna build it. But now we're doing is one complete project. Um, next slide shows kind of our construction approach. Um, we're working to complete the bridge as quickly as possible. In fact, it's delivered to the site. Um, our contractor has not even closed the underpass yet. In fact, it'll be open this weekend. Have some nice beautiful weather continuing. And the contractor has committed to keeping that open as much as possible so that we don't disrupt the community or the visitors. Um, we are, you know, the Boulder Canyon Trail will remain open, the Chapman Drive Trail will remain, remain open. The only thing that's closed, as you see in the yellow hatching and the red is just that small segment of the canyon trail and then the actual existing trailhead. Um, but folks can still access, um, you know, Chapman Drive Trail, Boulder Canyon Trail and that sort of thing. Um, vehicles certainly can drive into the wedding event venue and all the private property that's hatched in the red there. Uh, but that's kind of the construction sequencing. Um, I'll just say quickly, you know, this was identified in the West Trail Study Area, the Chapman Trailhead Project. Um, it was again, a lot of community input, a lot of discussion over the years. In fact, it pretty much meets the seven C aspect we've been working on. How do we allow folks to visit places and access places? And in this case, truly separated from vehicles, which is a really unique experience. Um, and so we, we think it's a, a great opportunity. It meets a lot of our master plan priorities. Um, last thing I'll say is that there's a lot of these situations around town. Um, you'll probably, you've probably seen around the community, there's a vehicular bridge and then right next you'll see a trail bridge. Um, so unfortunately, given the size and the width and all those dimensions that these bridges and these facilities have to be, um, if you think about paying for all that widening on a vehicular bridge, it requires a lot more structural and support trucks and vehicles, it's sometimes in, in many cases, a lot cheaper just to build a steel trail bridge. It's a lot less structural integrity and that sort of thing, um, or to, to support trail users, not necessarily vehicle. So that's a general overview. Um, again, we wanted to provide the board with an update. We know there was questions and so I'm happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Yeah, and just to be clear about the underpass closure, we are expecting that as soon as the bridge is installed, the underpass will be open, uh, twenty-four seven. Uh, so even though the trailhead project still needs to happen and will continue past the bridge placement, as soon as the bridge, br- the bridge is placed on it, we'll, uh, that underpass will be open twenty-four hours a day, um, seven days a week. And we're expecting that later this spring, uh, late May, early June kind of thing.
Okay. I'm gonna open up for questions, uh, about this, uh, but I wanted to ask you, Jeff, how will you communicate to people when the underpass is open versus when it's closed? I guess when we put like some signs that say, hey, you don't actually need to get out, you know, risk your life and get, get onto one nineteen, like before they would turn off? Or would you do some social media, like how, so that people could plan ahead? Like, I don't know if people knew it was open this weekend.
Oh, yeah, that's a great question. So onsite, we won't have signs and, and barricades and barriers actually closed. So if someone is in the canyon or on the trail, they would be able to just go through. We won't physically have it closed. But to answer your question, yeah, we're using social media, um, you know, updates to our like Boulder Mountain Bike Alliance and other partners that can share the word. Um, we'll use our, um, you know, we'll, certainly when it's open for good, we'll have press releases. But the, we'll keep the webpage updated. Um, and then our, our interactive trail map will have all the latest closures, just like it does. Um, with any closure, whether it's muddy trails or fire or any, any situation that requires closure. Um, but and including with, with the Boulder Canyon Trail, uh, we'll communicate that as well through the county and other channels. So yeah, um, basically, social media, web, you know, internet, that sort of thing to try to communicate as much as we can.
Yeah, I mean, I'll just say that I think the bridge is a good thing. I know that there are people who ride on Boulder Canyon. I am not one of them. I'm not somebody who feels comfortable on the road anymore. I used to ride on the road. The only exception is I've been riding up to N Car lately just to get outside. But even that scares me. So I, 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 I am really happy that you have the separated bridge for folks coming off the underpass and, and off the path. I know that people don't think it's necessary, but it's, some people do believe it's necessary to keep people safe. So definitely think that's, uh, the right thing to do and, um, the partnership that you've had with the county and this longstanding partnership. And this is a project that's been underway for a really long time. So I'm, I'm very supportive of the project in general and I'm glad that you're gonna try to open it up as soon as you can.
Man, thank you.
You wanted to say anything, Harmon, or no? Okay.
Great. Thanks, Jeff.
Yep.
All right, we're gonna move on to, uh, uh, item two, which is an update on our funded research program. And we have, uh, Ann Lesberg, a senior ecologist that will be leading that, uh, our presentation tonight from O S M P. And, uh, she'll also be introducing, uh, a, uh, one of our researchers, uh, a guest who will present, uh, the findings of his research from a funded research project last year. So I'll let Ann get settled in, uh, but I'll just mention that uh, funded research, this is, uh, we're gonna be highlighting our own department-specific pool of money that we allocate in order to, uh, conduct research on our program. But also mention that, uh, both Jeffco, Longmont and Boulder County all have funded research programs, uh, of themselves as well. And so together, regionally, it pools into quite a robust, uh, uh, funding project for local researchers. Uh, sometimes up to the, in the scare of a hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand dollars. And we could support around fifteen to twenty projects amongst the agencies. And there's often times where we will collaborate on a research project. So did I give you enough time to, to get settled in?
Yeah, I figured out how to turn on the mic. Can you hear me? Yeah. Thank you, everyone. Um, hello to the board. My name again is Ann Lesberg and I'm, uh, ecologist with the Science and Climate Resilience Group. And, um, I am gonna be co-presenting with Jacob Watts here, who's with C U Boulder. He's a PhD student with the Ecology and Evolutionary Biology Department. And he's in, um, Aaron Menzido Trips Lab. So, um, this evening, I'm gonna provide a brief overview of the funded research program, outlining the purpose and the history and sharing the recipients of the twenty twenty-five proposals funded. And then providing a snapshot of one of the past funded projects. And then I'll leave most of the time for Jacob to share some of the really interesting work, work he's doing with doing a like an inventory, excuse me, on O S M P property. So the funded research program, sorry, I have to remember that, like we, you know, is, supports external researchers through a small grants program. And it's to study and learn about our natural, cultural and visitor resources. The funded research program is, uh, in alignment with our O S M P master plan strategy of, of developing a learning lab for both recreation and conservation. And the funds are provided through the open space in mountain parks operating budget. And we really appreciate, Dan, the consistent investment in science at O S M P. And we also appreciate that this couldn't happen without the continued support of the Boulder Sales Tax. So these are competitive grants, but anyone is open to apply. And the annual cycle begins in the fall when we put out a request for a proposal. And then research can, researchers can learn how to submit on our webpage. You can see on the right there, that's what our webpage looks like. And then decisions are made in early January for funding in that calendar year. And most of these projects are intended to be completed in one year. Then grant recipients are required to share results in a report and often sometimes give presentations, as we see here, and publish in the scientific literature. So the goals of the funded research project, as we envision them today, are many dimensional. As we strive to, um, address management needs, um, research, go ahead in the next slide, can help management practices, um, through like experimental or observational studies. They, these can inform resource plans, like our GRASS and ecosystem management plan. They also, um, another goal is to fill information gaps. And so studies can gather baseline information about little-known resources. And sometimes these lead to discoveries and highlighting here, um, some new and unique species that were discovered by, um, Jacob's mentor, um, at White Rocks. And you'll hear more about what Jacob's discovering in recent surveys as well. Next slide, please. Our goal is also to train scientists, students and land managers to solidify relationships with the research community. And then to showcase O S M P's outdoor laboratory for really high-quality recreation and conservation research. So the research allows us to compare and contrast our lands with those of the larger region that we're part of. Next slide. So research on O S M P land predates open space establishment, which is really interesting. In the fifties and sixties, many young ecologists were attracted to the front range because of its unique environment from the plains to the mountain parks. So these early ecologists described the vegetation communities and wildlife, um, including ants, as you see in that report there, on our lands. Next slide, please. In the early days of open space, scientists from C U focused a lot of effort in developing these multidisciplinary um, s- um, studies specific to natural areas. And those informed research and management as well. Next slide. So records of formal funding date back to nineteen ninety-five. And funding between nineteen ninety-five and two thousand was steady. And then two thousand and three to two thousand and thirteen, the funding was low and we think that was related to focusing funds on monitoring as part of the visitor monitoring, the visitor master plan. Um, recent funding has, um, increased and been more consistent, starting in two thousand and fourteen. And you can see looking at that graph that the yellow bars represent the number of proposals funded each year. The green bars are the number of applicants we've received. So, you know, it varies year to year, but typically five to eleven projects are funded per year. And more recently, in two seventeen, we started an inter-agency funding program. And this is working with Boulder County, Jefferson County, and now City of Longmont, so that we can cross boundaries, put more money to fund projects that share a research question. Next slide, please. So our goal in the funded research program is to improve the way we um, have deliverables, address conservation and management questions and inspire stewardship and education. So some of the tools we now use to share research include the traditional hard copy reports and publications you see on the bottom. Those are also available on the web. And we also put together bibliographies of published studies. We try to do science outreach. On the upper left, you can see a junior ranger that's part of the climate crew. And this is a new program started, um, where they are monitoring climate by microclimate sensors. And this was inspired by one of our researchers. And we have the traditional, the, um, symposium that we have every couple of years. And then in the lower right, I wanted to emphasize the importance of this sort of generational passing on of knowledge from scientists that have been working in the field to new and undergraduate scientists. What you're looking at there is our drought net experiment. This is actually a project with C U Boulder. And for many years, they've been studying the effects of reducing rain, um, in the, this grassland. And it's taken, um, many years of putting up the structures and a lot of that happens in the field where people get ideas and share knowledge in the field. Next slide, please. So this year, we evaluated thirteen proposals across many different topics. And a core team of four of us and then additional subject matter experts read and evaluated the proposals. And they recommended these five that you see and are also in your memo. Um, I'm gonna highlight in the next few minutes, just three of those. Next slide, please. So John Kocilek, I'm not sure I'm pronouncing his name right, with the C U Museum of Natural History, was funded to identify diatom species in wetlands. That will also be monitored by our wetland ecologists this coming field season. So diatoms are microorganisms. Um, they're actually algae living in these glass house, glass houses that occupy wet and water environments. And those diverse shells that you see on the left side of the slide, um, help identify the species. And the different species of diatoms also characterize different environmental conditions. So evaluating a metric associated with diatom diversity or composition may help us develop an indicator of wetland quality. That's why these two things are going together. Next slide. Peter Johnson, um, again, I'm not sure I'm pronouncing his first name right, and collaborators were funded to further investigate this host-parasite interaction associated with limbel formations in the northern leopard frog and sometimes other amphibians. That's a, a tier one species of great conservation, greatest conservation concern. So they had past funded and unfunded work, um, with this lab group evaluated an outbreak on O S M P property related to limbel formations. And, um, in the left, you see a really recent publication just last year that Will Keely was a co-author of. Um, and their lab has characterized the type of deformities, the identified trematode parasite infection and examined infection in aquatic snails. So this season, what they'll do is continue to in, assess infection in snails, but also use camera traps to document the frequency and identity of other secondary hosts, such as water-associated birds that can disperse the parasite to more fully evaluate the parasite-host dynamics. Next slide. Brett Renaud is with C R O Planning and Design, was funded to coordinate a group of well-known social scientists to determine who is not recreating on O S M P land and why. So this study will use an online survey of Boulder County residents who do not or have not recreated on, on O S M P lands. They will identify variables related to non-participation in outdoor recreation. Some of the things they'll consider are, um, barriers pertaining to facilities on open space, participation costs, regulations, safety, inclusivity, accessibility and more. Next slide. So here, I just want to highlight, um, a study by Anna Paris-Gavopoulos and colleagues funded in two, twenty twenty-one under Will Keely's sponsorship that demonstrated the value of revisiting historic research. There's a lot to digest in this slide, but I'll try to talk you through it. So Anna relocated and re-surveyed study sites from the nineteen fifty's study that I pointed out at the beginning of ants along an elevational gradient at Gregory Canyon and compared ant composition. And she was asking how and why species distribution changes over time, that's sixty years. If temperature, tree cover or aspect explained those changes. And this visual, if you can kind of picture those dots and triangles. And this visual, if you can kind of picture those dots and triangles are plots where she measured ant composition. And the ones in the brown on the bottom are the ones that were measured in the 1950s. And the blue are the ones that were measured more recently. And the polygons sort of connect the ones on the same aspect. So what she found was that there were large differences in the composition of ants based on aspects, both time periods. And time period was a huge differentiating factor. So there was some change in ant composition going on. And that sites in recent times were more similar in composition. They were homogenizing. So if you can see the way the dots and the polygons are coming together, they're getting more similar. And so one of her thoughts was, she actually showed us, was that species, individual species foraging across a wider range of temperature that had that ability became more widespread across sites. So there's a lot more in that publication, but it was exciting to see the use of two data sets 60 years apart from OSMP. So now I would like to move on to Jacob and let him tell you the exciting work he's doing about lichens. Thank you.
Hi, yeah, I'm Jacob. Good to meet y'all. Like she said, I'm a PhD candidate at CU Boulder. And I was funded a couple of years ago to do the first baseline survey of all the lichens that occur at the city of Boulder. And you're all aware that, and you dedicate lots of time and energy to conserving these lands. Yet, there remains a huge gap in what we know about the biodiversity of, of the land. And so lichens are one of these enigmatic, beautiful organisms that have been long kind of undersurveyed and understudied. So that's my project and I'm dedicating my PhD basically to that. So, yeah, I'm excited to just give a brief overview of what I've been doing for the last couple of years, using some of the funding from y'all. Next slide, please. So as a quick outline, I'll just go over what is a lichen? Why should you care or why are they important? And how do I study them on OSMP? What drives their diversity and community composition? Why is OSMP so technologically special, as I've come to learn over the past couple of years? And then I'll go over some rare lichens that I've discovered, some common lichen genera, genera just groups of organisms. And, and then some questions. Next slide. So this is actually, I love this lichen, it's the golden cobblestone lichen. Or the scientific name in the bottom right is Pleopsidium flavum. That's just Latin gibberish. But the golden cobblestone lichen is one of the most common lichens in Colorado. It line, it, so, and you'll see it on the flatirons too. If you're, if you catch the flatirons at the right lighting, especially on the vertical faces or the slightly overhung faces, you'll see a huge yellow stain across like hundreds of feet of rock. And all of that is this lichen. But that doesn't really ask, answer the question, what is actually a lichen? So next slide, please. Lichens are actually a composite organism. They are made up of a fungus and an algae or an alga living together in a symbiotic relationship. So the alga, the alga will do what plants do, it'll photosynthesize. And the fungus kind of creates a home for the algae. They're cosmopolitan, they're known on, from all seven continents. And they've actually evolved multiple times. It's really, really interesting. And they've been, they've been around since the plants invaded land. But for, for whatever reason, they don't fossilize very well. So we only have limited evidence of that. And something really interesting is that they host many accessory partners. So it's not just a fungus and an alga. There's many bacteria and other accessory fungi and microinvertebrates. Another student in my lab is actually describing a new arthropod only known from lichens thus far. And so, yeah, you see like typical fungal hyphae on the left and then individual algal cells. So the fungal hyphae and the algal cells, when they're apart, they don't really look anything like a lichen. And then if you add those two very weird looking things together, you get something even weirder looking, but looks nothing like the other two partners. So it's really a magical feat of evolution to have come up with this kind of three-dimensional structure that then can survive in some of the most harsh habitats on Earth. Next slide, please. So if you were to cut a lichen in half vertically, you'd see a cross section that looks something like this. So they're actually very complex anatomically. There's an upper layer of very compact fungal cells, which protects the algae. And then there's the algae in a, in a small layer, just like a leaf. And then there's a layer of loosely packed fungal hyphae. And then finally, a lower layer that continually protects the algae. But again, it's remarkable that they've come up with these interesting structures. Next. So why should you care about this, other than the obvious beauty? So all the pictures in this presentation have been taken from OSMP land. And so you can see just the morphological diversity, but other than that, next slide. They, as I mentioned, with the golden cobblestone lichen, they will inhabit bare rock faces unlike any other organism known. They, they're really good at breaking down rocks. So the, the hyphae will actually penetrate into the rock. And that contributes to soil formation and stabilization, because they'll also grow on soil. And then you can see in the bottom left, there's actually a snail, those little brown bite marks are where a snail has actually eaten that lichen. So they're food for microorganisms. And they just tie in all the things that we care about in terms of ecosystem services. They also, one of the students in my lab is, is doing this, but I've donated some of my specimens from the city of Boulder to study lead accumulation in lichens across the state of Colorado. And as you would expect with this, with Boulder being closer to Denver, the lead values from the lichens in the city of Boulder are actually much higher than they would be in a pristine, like alpine environment, like Indian Peaks Wilderness. So, so they're protecting our water and they're, they're providing all these irreplaceable services. Next. And you can see, and anyone, any of my friends, if you ask, they'll, they'll say that I'm a complete field junkie. I love being outside. I love collecting lichens. And I'm really fortunate to be not only permitted, but funded to do so by the city. And you can see in the, the right image and, and on any hike that you go on, they're covering every rock face, most of the tree surface and, and anywhere where it's stable enough. Next slide. So the goals of the, the project, it was supposed to be a one-year project. And we've learned that they're far more diverse than we could have ever imagined in the city of Boulder. And so it's taken more than a year to understand them. But the overall goal is just a baseline inventory of all the species that occur in the city of Boulder. And then also, where are they most diverse? And then finally, a, a larger outreach goal of publishing a field guide so that people other than myself can appreciate them. Because it is really just gibberish. Nobody really understands or can really, without being taught or reading about it, decode their morphologies and like appreciate them for the way that I see them. And so I want to write a book that's very similar to the book you see on the right, which was published by my advisor in 2018 or something, which is The Lichens of White Rocks. I don't know if anyone's been blessed with owning that book, but you can buy it online. It's a really good read. So, so those are the goals, next slide. So how I actually accomplish this is through many hours in the field traversing the mountains of OSMP. I've established a 31-plot network. The plots are 25 by 25 meters across, so they're about the same size of this room, maybe a little bit bigger. And, and from those 31 plots, I've collected 2,000, over 2,000 lichen specimens in the past couple of years. And then those plots can only, you know, encompass a majority of the lichen species. But some of them really require very specific microclimates. And so I've also made about a thousand miscellaneous collections, usually in the deep wet canyons where, where I see something really special. And I've never seen that before, so I have to go ahead and collect it. And then at each of the plots, you can see in the middle image, there's a, a microclimate sensor. So it's protected from sun in that little capsule, but exposed to the air. So you can get like a really accurate measurement of the local climate that the lichens are experiencing. And then we measure basic ecological things about the plot, like the slope and aspect of the land, how much, how much rocky habitat and woody habitat is available to lichens. Like, as I said, they grow on every stable surface, including like dead wood that's on the ground. And then we'll quantify canopy cover using hemispherical images and then binarizing those images and figuring out how many pixels are white and how many are black. So it's a really, it's as quantitative as you can be in, in a field like field ecology. So, next slide. So this is the land that we all know and love, city of Boulder, highlighted in the tan color. Those are all the properties. And then the red triangles are the plots that I've been fortunate enough to visit. Usually I try to put the plots as far away from humanity as possible, because that's where the lichens are the most diverse. They hate people. But that also is a really interesting reason why we should study them here at an urban wild and interface. And so the, so the red triangles are where comprehensive inventories, meaning I've gone out and collected every single species that I saw over a many-hour search and brought them back to the lab. And then the blue dots are just the miscellaneous cool sites where I found oddities or things that I didn't recognize. Next slide. So I, I said it's quantitative, this is just lots of numbers. But basically, what this slide represents is that you can actually predict the microclimate. And this is not novel in any way, but you can predict the microclimate that a lichen might experience based on the elevation of the plot, how far north the plot is facing, or how far south the plot is facing. And then the canopy cover at that plot. So basically, north-facing slopes with lots of trees are very wet and moist. And so they, they tend to host extremely different lichen communities in those plots. Uh, next slide. So once I get it back in the lab, like how do I actually identify it? This maybe is superfluous, superfluous information, but we use dichotomous keys. If you've ever been out in the field with a plant ecologist, they use the same thing. A dichotomous key just gives you two roads to go on, like is the, is the plant or the lichen yellow or is it not yellow? If it's yellow, go this way. If it's not yellow, go this way. And then it gives you a subset of all the lichen taxa that are known. So they're really useful, but the problem is that dichotomous keys are not available for this region. Nobody has ever surveyed this region before. Colorado has no working dichotomous keys. So what we actually have to do in my lab is sift through hundreds of primary literature papers that are either documenting new lichens to science or providing some sort of revisionary taxonomy for, for the group that we're working with. And so we're actually writing some of the keys and I'll be writing keys as we go and, and describing new species to science. And so it's been a really long process. And then there's, you can't really see it because of the zoom box, but there's a red dot up there on that yellow lichen. And if you actually dump a chemical on the lichen, because of the metabolites that it has, it'll change color. The, the chemical is, is highly basic and it alters the reflectance properties of the secondary metabolites in the lichen, therefore changing it from yellow to red. And it can also be purple, it can also change to blue. Basically, the color that it changes to, it sounds like, like magic, but the color that it changes to will tell you whether or not there is a specific secondary metabolite present in that lichen. And that will be really informative for the identification of that lichen. We'll also make cross-sections. You can see the second picture is basically a vertical cross-section of any fungal mushroom, basically. Because like I said, lichens are fungi and algae living together. And so we'll actually identify the fungus by making cross-sections of those fruiting bodies and measuring things like spore shape and size. So it's really fun and I'm, again, super fortunate to be doing this. And hopefully, this can result in something useful, like, like Anna's study on the ants. Like, I would never be able to do that study because nobody has gone and systematically surveyed 30, you know, a bunch of plots in the 60s for lichens. But fortunately, someone did that for ants. And so maybe 60 years from now, someone can revisit my plots and see if the lichen communities have changed. So that's why we have to put names on things, it's, it's just the way it works. And, and all of the specimens will be basically, hopefully preserved in perpetuity at the herbarium at CU Boulder and distributed to herbaria all over the world so that people can continually reference like these lichens that I've collected from the city of Boulder and try and understand as the taxonomy and our understanding of these organisms changes, what's actually going on in this well-managed and pristine landscape. So next. So I mentioned we're writing the literature as we go. We're actually right now describing two new species. It's in review right now to science from the city of Boulder. And these are, these are not like obscure lichens that you have to squint to see. These are huge lichens, like this big, they grow everywhere in the city of Boulder. And they're these charismatic organisms. And, and yet, like, they're just sitting there, like right next to the city, completely unknown to science. And so we're excited to be doing this. Next slide. So how do we actually do this? We use some sequencing and phylogenetics methods. So we'll actually extract the DNA from the lichens. And then we'll, we'll, we, there's a target region of the DNA that is very informative for taxonomy and for like species identification. So we'll amplify that region using polymerous chain reaction or PCR. We'll, we'll send it off to a company which will sequence that and give us back As, Ts, and Gs. And then we have to make, make sense of those As, Ts, and Gs. So we'll align the sequences of closely related organisms to those new sequences and basically construct some sort of evolutionary hypothesis of how, how that clade of evolving organisms came about. And so you can see the, the gray bars are where, where those new species exist in this one genus of, of lichens. So they're distantly related, but growing in the same habitat and both new to science. So pretty exciting. Next slide. Briefly, I'll talk about drivers of diversity and community composition in OSMP. So this is, if you're aware, this is the Sacred Cliffs. It's like right next to the summit of Green. You can see South Boulder and Bear in the background. And then to the, to the left is the Great Plains, obviously. Next slide. So what I've found is, is Boulder is very geologically diverse. And those different geologies drive different lichen communities being supported because they grow in such close contact with their, with their substrate. Next slide. You can see the, basically a cross-section of the city You can see the, basically a cross-section of the City of Boulder. But you see Boulder is is built on the pier shale. It's typical for people to build on shale because it's nice and flat. And then Fox Hills is that really soft, special sandstone out to the east. And then, but then there's a bunch of different types of sandstone that have been basically uplifted by mountain-building events. And then finally, you get the granites that make up the vast majority of Green and Bear. But there's limestone, soft sandstones, conglomerates, and very crumbly granite. So all those different substrates, if you imagine yourself being a fungal hypha, trying to penetrate between two grains of sand versus penetrating between a very hard granite, they're very different ways of life, and so they support different lichens. Next slide. This is not necessarily surprising, but because lichens grow on rocks, if you are in a very rocky habitat, you're going to find a lot more lichen species. And so the City of Boulder is is one of these really special places where there's a beautiful balance of of trees and exposed rock, which you don't really get many other places. Next slide. And then, like I mentioned, those north-facing sheltered habitats, they they support large folios lichens, like the two species that we're describing new to science. And they contribute to that diversity. So vapor pressure deficit is basically how much water is being pulled from any surface. So it's a measure of dryness. So the drier plots have fewer species because of those big folios lichens that you see on the right. Next slide. So to, to summarize, basically, O S and P is geologically diverse, has large rock outcroppings, moist, montane, and prairie habitats, and it's obviously well-preserved and managed. So that, that's essentially the core of what makes O S and P lichenologically special. Next slide. So if you were to actually map out, you know, we, we like to think about preserving this diversity for future generations to appreciate, but also to maintain these ancient organisms that have been living here for millions of years before we came. One of the things that I'd recommend is, is identifying these sensitive lichen habitats. So there's, there's a lot of really rare geological formations where I find species that would otherwise, that I would otherwise never see. And so these are the, those are the names of different geological formations where I've collected lichens and I think deserve extra special care in terms of potentially limiting off-trail traffic or something like that. You can click. And then large outrock, outcroppings. This is actually the base of the second flatiron. Very common place to go scrambling. And you can see, unlike all the other rock images that I've shown, there's basically no lichens growing at the base of the second flatiron because hundreds of people every year trample them. But those large outcroppings provide really narrow microclimates where certain species can survive. Next slide. And then finally, the sheltered music habitats are really special as well. So like Bear Can- the north face of Bear Canyon, which is the image you're seeing on the bottom left. And all the other purple highlighted areas are basically super steep north-facing slopes where not that many people go and lots of moisture can accumulate and stay around for long times. So that's, that's a really, if you could summarize all of my work into one slide, it'd be this, that these areas are the most lichenologically sensitive and should be taken with care or managed with care. Next slide. And so I mentioned this should have been a one-year project, but it's kind of ballooned into this massive project. And so we have actually that, that number is out of date. The three hundred and eighty species is a couple of months old. We're now about four hundred and fifty species, unique to the City of Boulder. And for comparison, other cities have obviously far fewer than that. And I'd, I'd say the City of Boulder is one of the most, across the entire world, one of the most lichenologically diverse because of its unique position managing such interesting and pristine land. And then we're still discovering new species every day that I open one of my, or, you know, address one of my previously collected specimens. It can, it still poses a challenge to identify a lot of these things because I'm not sure if it's described or if if there's a name or if I have to describe it myself. And so we're still discovering these things. And that's just a species accumulation curve. So basically, with the number of specimens that I've collected, the, it should reach an asymptote if you've done a good job inventorying a land. And you can see it's not reaching an asymptote yet. So we still have some, some ways to go despite four hundred, four hundred and fifty species thus far. Next slide. And what's crazy is that over one hundred of those species are known from a single encounter or a single collection that I've made. And so about a fourth of the species aren't known. They're, they're extremely rare, essentially. And then you can see on the, the right side, the number of occurrences. There's a few species that are extremely common, but the vast majority of them are known from one, two, or three collections. Next slide. So this brings me to part two, which will be super fast. But essentially, because most lichens are rare, there's also a very small amount that are super common. And so if you just learn a couple of those, it can go a long way towards just understanding and and having a better sense of place. And so that's what I am trying to accomplish with the field guys, just hopefully point people in the right direction for some of the most common things so that they can, you know, just have a book that shows these are the most common things that you're going to see. So I've just highlighted that section of the, of the plot there where there's maybe twenty species that occur like eighty percent of the time. Next slide. So I'll just flip through these really fast. But I just wanted to showcase some of my work and some of the images I've been taking. These are all, again, from the City of Boulder. You can see the complex morphologies and hopefully appreciate them. Yeah, you can just flip through every ten seconds or something.
While we're flipping through those, Jacob, are, are the lichen that you see on the second flatiron consider, would you consider them to be rare or sensitive?
Some of them, I, I think so. But that, and I'm guilty of this as well, but that, that whole thing has been, you know, traversed. And so
You've traversed it?
Yeah. But that whole area has been trampled and, and anything that was rare is likely to not be there. I have encountered some things when I'm, I'm climbing that that I don't recognize. So, but I haven't brought my collecting materials. We actually bring a hammer and chisel into the field because the rocks are obviously really hard. And if you try to scrape it off with a knife or something, it just breaks, it like destroys the specimen, so.
So you are a rock climber?
Little bit. I'm not a super strong, but.
Well, I mean, if you want to collect samples from the overhanging pieces of the flatirons that have that glistening yellow.
Yeah.
I don't do that because it's too hard. But well, thank you for that, Jacob. Do you, I just have a question. Do you cordon off your plots? Like, can, is it, is it obvious to somebody walking by that that's one of your plots that you, you want to study for years and years?
So I've actually, they're not deployed anymore.
Oh, they're not? Okay.
The microclimate sensors were deployed for twelve months to get a seasonal understanding. And then I took them down. And while they were deployed, the, the sensor itself had writ, like, very clearly written, like, this is O S and P formal research, like, don't touch this. But they were, they were really far off trail most of the time, like, not visible from the trail in, in ninety percent of cases. So I I don't think too many members of the public would encounter them.
Are there questions for Jacob or Ann? Go ahead, Harmon.
I just think it's great, and I can imagine it being fun for kids because, you know, they've got such sharp eyes and they're so close to the ground, you know, if they could junior lichen rangers, learning the species and stuff. And I think it's cool that, you know, we, we just read about the the pseudo-scorpion that was discovered up in the caves by Mallory Cave.
Yeah.
So we got a new species named after Boulder, and maybe we'll get some press coverage for all the new lichens you're finding.
Yeah, there's, there's already, so I kind of skipped this over, but there's a lot of species called Bolderensis of lichens already because in the sixties, like, it's crazy. Boulder is one of the most lichenologically studied areas in Colorado, yet we're finding all these new things. And that's because of a longstanding lichenologist that was here before. And so he invited global experts from all over. He was a traveler and communicating with botanists and such. And a lot of people named lichens after Bolderensis because he was one of the first people to start actually collecting them and documenting them. So I think I am aware of like three or four already, but maybe a new one.
Well, thanks for sharing that with us.
I was, I was going to say, I look forward to your book that you're publishing. When I was in middle school, my older brother gave me a book by Rachel Carson, and it had a lot of pictures. And I think I learned about lichen first from my older brother who was a scientist. And it, it does create a sense of wonder, and there is something magical about being able to discover those lichens on the ground, especially for young people.
Yeah, for sure.
Thank you for the work you're doing for all of us, young and old.
Thanks.
Thanks. I, I learned about lichen because it's my friend in me as a rock climber. It's a little bit wet and you just slip right off. There we go. There's a climb in West Virginia, Seneca Rocks, West Virginia, called Lichen or Leave It.
That's really fun.
So rock climbing is after lichen. Lichenable. Thank you, Jacob. Thank you, Ann.
Thank you, Jacob.
Thanks.
Thank you, Ann. Thank you, Brian. All right, we have a decision point to make, Chair. We have about eighty minutes left of presentations that it's least slated, so keep that in mind, presenters. We're, we're running a little close to the nine o'clock bewitching hour, so let's be sensitive to that. But I would like, Michelle, would you like us to go one more and then decide if we want a break? Or do you want to take a five-minute break now, or?
How about a five-minute break now, and then we'll forge on?
Okay. And then if Casey and Brian and team could be thinking about ways to, well, you don't have to cut, but just maybe pace. Yeah, thank you. Okay, great. We are now on to our third matters from the department, and we are going to be highlighting and providing you an update on portions of our wildfire resilience work and with a focus on the five-year implementation plan, which is actually a citywide effort that O S and P is helping to spearhead and lead the coordination of that five-year plan. But we also want to take advantage of being in front of you tonight to also call out some of our other wildfire resilience actions that we are looking forward to putting on the ground in 2025. So it's a little bit of mix of various aspects of our big scope of wildfire resilience. And I think, based on our community interest and your interests, I think you'll find this pretty compelling. So I think Brian Aniker is from our Science and Climate Resilience team is going to be starting us off.
Good evening, Board. Thank you, Dan. We're going to start tonight with a brief look back at the last two years in terms of where we've been with the board, our key partners, and some of the strategic enhancements we've made on wildfire resilience. Then I'll turn it over to George, who's seated two down from me, to talk about our five-year implementation plan for wildfire resilience on behalf of the entire city. And that's going to take us from 2025 out through 2030. And then we'll wrap up with Paul giving us some highlights from field management projects happening in the wildland urban interface. So over the last two years, it's been a busy time with OSPT. You can see on the slide about nine different engagements we've brought in front of you, various types of meetings, including study sessions, of course, business meetings, retreats. You may remember a couple of field visits we did as part of those, Wonderland Lake. We also went out in the field at Chautauqua and written information. And I just wanted to show this because I think it really underlines our commitment to having an open dialogue with you as the Board of Trustees and in turn, our community as well. Of course, the reason we're here and really renewing this conversation is that in the last five years, we've had a lot of really notable wildfires in Boulder County and surrounding counties, which we heard about earlier tonight. And in the wake of these fires, we've got billions of dollars of damages and real sense of trauma in the community that is continuing to this day. And really, they serve as a wake-up call, I think, for Boulder and all of Colorado and really all western states, that it's time to renew our efforts and think about every step of the wildfire resilience situation in terms of what improvements we can make from prevention to preparation, response, and through to recovery. One of the big responses to the recent events was to put ten different entities together into a new wildfire resilience team. And George will tell you a little bit more about this later. But the theme I want to really hit tonight is partnership and collaboration. So there's a lot we're doing as O S and P, but there's a lot more we can do working together with our departments, including those shown on this slide, which each of these represents staff with lots of different expertise. They have defined roles that they play in the space of wildfire resilience, and we're much stronger together than we are separate. For O S and P, our real focus is on the concept of resilient landscapes. And again, in the spirit of partnership, the three of us are up here tonight, but you can just see a list of names, and I'm just including work group names across our own Department of Open Space and Mountain Parks. They're involved in managing landscapes for multi-objectives, including ecosystem health and resilience, and also for the co-benefit often of wildfire risk reduction. The five work groups I'll just flag here are Ecological Stewardship, Fedge Stewardship, Ag and Water Stewardship. Those are in Heather Swanson's service area called Resource Stewardship. The Resource Information Stewardship Work Group, Lauren Kilcoyne's service area, really helping us on the technical side. And then our own work group in Dan's office, if you will, including myself, these two, and a few others, including Ann, who's here tonight. And many more that I'm not labeling here, but lots of O S and P staff involved in the topic of wildfire resilience. So sometimes we think about resilient landscapes in terms of a toolbox. Here's a listing of over ten different approaches that we take through our regular operations, especially those first four, that give us fuel reduction as a benefit. And I'm just showing you acreage estimates from 2024 here. So landscape-scale grazing, weed management through our integrated pest management program, the management of prairie dogs, both in conservation and removal, and haying. All three of those operations give us benefits in terms of reducing wildfire risk and allowing wildfires to be controlled more effectively. All three of those operations give us benefits in terms of reducing wildfire risk and allowing wildfires to be controlled more effectively. On top of that, we've got over seven hundred acres of projects that are really fuel reduction focused. Where we're looking at wildfire risk a little more explicitly. Tall oak grass grazing, Paul will talk about that more. You've heard from Chris Warner about our forest thinning program in the mountain backdrop. Targeted wooie fuels management, perimeter mowing, which is what we were talking about at Wonderland and Chautauqua. Again, Paul mentioned that more. Andy Pelster's group working on fuels management in our ditches, putting prescribed fire on the ground. And then adding some new work on defending structures that O S and P owns and operates to help prevent their loss in the event of a wildfire. So all in, lots and lots of acres to make that a little more real. For a handful of those, I'll just plop them on a map for you. This is very drafty and it's part of Georgia's wildfire resilience implementation plan to put this information together in a way we can tell a story to the community. But it is a work in progress, made possible through Brian Taverney's work with Paul and others. But I wanted to give you an early look at it here. So I mentioned forest treatments in twenty twenty four, one hundred and seventy acres were cleared. This map is showing those acres uh on top of all the other acres that have been done historically since um one last ten years, say. In that green horizontal or uh diagonal stipple, that's Chris Warner's work, where uh Mike Steinbeis and the FEMP crew. I'm going to add to that our hay fields in Andy Pelster's work group, uh working with Ryan Middleton and Vanessa McCracken. That's another two thousand seven hundred and fifty acres. Wet habitats that are hard to burn and that hay of, of course, cut. And so at some points in the season, there's really nothing there to be burned. So you get some benefit of fuels reduction and risk uh reduction there. Adding into there, Paul's new work, forty six acres in twenty twenty four. These pink polygons are showing those acres on top of additional acreage planned for this year and future years. Starts to round out a lot of that western edge of the city of Boulder in terms of fuels management projects. And you'll hear more about that shortly. Grazing, huge number of acres in livestock grazing, which has a lot of benefits for agricultural tenants. A lot of ecological benefits there as a surrogate for natural good, healthy wildfire. And just the fuel reduction to help us uh prevent wildfire from spreading fast. And I think I've got one more layer I want to put on there. Prairie dogs, which management there crosses a couple of different work groups. Heather, Tori, Andy Pelster and Rob Hill working on this, over five thousand acres. Maybe not something you think about in con- the context of wildfire, but there's very little vegetation in these colonies. And they can act as natural fire breaks in the event of a wildfire. When we put all that together, you can start to see a ring around the city of Boulder where most of that acreage is getting some kind of fuels reduction treatment. Um, and again, just want to underscore the concept of multi objective. Some of these we're doing for fuels focused reasons, some we're doing more for ecological reasons. But fortunately, we're getting those co benefits and um feeling good about where we're going. Knowing, of course, that we need to continue to accelerate and enhance our work. Building on top of the last couple of years where we have done a lot of new stuff. We brought on a new Wildland Fire Senior Program Manager position, Paul's in that seat. We're working with our city partners to appropriate one point five million dollars in new funding for wildfire resilience projects specifically on top of a major investment we're making every year. We use some of that funding to grow the forestry staffing program up to thirteen and form more of a year round forestry crew. We use that funding to undertake an update to the Community Wildfire Protection Plan, which was published in twenty twenty four. We are accelerating our prescribed fire planning in twenty twenty four and hopefully we'll be doing more burning this year than ever. We created a new departmental operations center, which organizes the O S and P wildfire response in a way that's increasing our coordination and helping to augment uh the city and partner response during a wildfire. Accelerating our fuels management, which we talked about here in December, we talked about our climate plan and we showed you all the crosswalks with wildfire. That climate action has. We brought on a new citywide wildfire resilience program manager position in October. That's George. And George, um, is a perfect segue here, is going to tell you what his work is about. Largely, it's implementing the C W P P alongside a bunch of other commitments we've made throughout city plans. So with that, I'll turn it over to George now.
Uh, thanks, Brian. As he mentioned, this is a new position, I'm the new, I'm the new kid on the block in this group. And I apologize for the notes aspect of this, but I have a lot to cover in a short period of time and I don't want to ramble, so I'm going to dive right in. The next section is designed to provide a better understanding of the strategies and goals of the wildfire resilience implementation plan. And its integration with Boulder's Community Wildfire Protection Plan. Uh, the implementation plan that we call R I P represents a significant collaborative effort, as Brian mentioned. Um, to coalesce wildfire resilience projects from across the city into a single project portfolio. And also to align these projects with a recommendation that was defined in the city's two thousand twenty four C W P P update. So we're trying to align everything together. Um, and with that in mind, I wanted to spend a minute diving into the framework of that C W P P, as you can see on this slide. First and foremost, any C W P P is a strategic planning document that identifies communities' unique wildfire risk, available assets. And offers recommendations designed to reduce those risks. As a bonus, C W P Ps, uh, the C W P P process facilitates cross department and cross agency collaboration. And additionally, the projects associated with the C W P Ps get priority access to available grant funding. And it's been twenty years since we've updated the C W P P. And in that time, the city's experienced significant changes. Uh, not just in population and development, but increasing wildfire intensity has impacted suppression costs as well as the potential for large scale losses. The two thousand twenty four C W P P addresses these modern realities by applying a scientific approach to risk assessment. And by aligning uh recommendations within National Cohesive Wildland Fire Management Strategy that you see up there on the right side of that slide. Um, it's a federally developed framework that's now used nationwide. Um, our C W P P recommendations align with the three primary goals of the National Cohesive Strategy. And uh they're there to facilitate fire adapted communities, safe, effective wildfire response. As well as resilient landscapes, which we just heard about uh Brian focusing on. Next. Our updated C W P P identified thirty eight specific wildfire risk reduction recommendations. And each of them are aligned with a specific cohesive strategy. Uh, subsequently, each project identified in the R I P inventory is aligned with a specific C W P P recommendation. The projects highlighted in bold uh on the chart reflect recommendations that are aligned with O S M P activities. And you can see kind of a heavy hand in supporting resilient landscape activities. Next. As I mentioned earlier, that R I P was int- initiated to identify and align all wildfire resilience projects across the city departments. And to create a unified portfolio management system for prioritizing, managing and reporting on those projects. Uh, that early effort created a uni- uh unified project, that the project inventory that we built from that. Uh, basically, um, let me catch up here. We created a unified port- uh portfolio management system for prioritizing, managing and reporting on those projects. So the inventory was built through a careful review of over twenty city comprehensive plans and strategies. They're listed up there. And um as well as executive and core team meetings that had that preceded me. And specific project recommendations that were already outlined in the C W P P. So all those sources are listed in that slide and that process uncovered over three hundred relevant initiatives. Next. So our approach to implementing those projects is an ongoing and collaborative process. And it's kind of outlined here with success, success depending on ongoing stakeholder engagement, a robust project portfolio management system, direct support for stakeholders and project managers, strong tracking and reporting tools, and active community partnerships. Implementation starts with collaboration. And because wildfire resilience touches so many facets of city operations, we've structured an engagement model that includes an executive team providing senior city leadership, a core team of key departmental representatives, as well as cohesive strategy committees that are established as focused subcommittees. And each of them are aligned with um a cohesive strategy to help identify, prioritize and guide project activities. This structure enables transparency and streamline, stream lines communication across all stakeholder groups. The portfolio, creating a comprehensive project inventory and establishing a system for dynamic project management has been kind of a core goal of R I P. And the original project inventory I mentioned, over three hundred projects, has been consolidated through cross referencing city plans and C W P P data, consolidating overlapping efforts. And then standardizing project details. Through these refinements, we're now tracking close to a hundred and sixty planned, active and completed projects. It's still a lot of projects. The accompanying chart on that slide displays how those projects are distributed across the three cohesive strategies. With a, a heavy weight on resilient landscapes because Paul's been pretty busy. Next slide, please. Project management support, R I P supports many moving parts. And to support the project teams, we've developed an internal web platform that offers a centralized access point for tools, templates, guidance. And updates as well as resources designed to simplify and streamline project execution. Tracking progress is critical to R I P and the ability to simultaneously track progress across numerous projects is going to take two approaches for us. Uh, one is a portfolio management system, um, which doesn't make for a pretty slide. But we manage our project inventory through a dynamic portfolio management system to track schedules, budgets, resources, project tracking details for a broad spectrum of project complexities. Our second project tracking system is an interactive uh web based mapping application that Brian's already shown the, the value of that. My mic turned off, sorry. Um, this web based tool in the, is in development and we're using it internally. But it will enhance internal project coordination and provide a public facing view to promote transparency and community engagement. So that's going to be a valuable piece. And the project tracker came with uh was an additional component to the C W P P when it was delivered in two thousand twenty four. And finally, community partnership, uh, community partnership is a cornerstone of wildfire resilience here for the city of Boulder. Our goal is to raise awareness and empower residents to act. And current programs uh include free detailed home assessments through the Boulder Fire Rescue's Community Risk Reduction Team. A wildfire resilience assistant grants program that's designed to incentivize homeowners to implement home hardening recommendations. From that uh direct home set, uh detailed home assessments. And uh the fire adapted Colorado Neighborhood Assistance Program, otherwise known as FACO. Is a train, the trainer model to enhance neighborhood engagement and we're currently evaluating the effectiveness of how that can help us in um communicating with communities, with neighborhoods. And then uh finally focused neighborhood gatherings, which we're already doing, thank you, Paul. And public events through Boulder Fire Rescue, all to foster connection and action. And I think my takeaway for you is that the, our wildfire implementation plan is an on, it's an ongoing and collaborative process. It's going to span, it spans departmental and property boundaries. It provides a solid project management framework through which to integrate projects, supporting wildfire resilience. And aligning them with directives that are outlined in the C W P P. And finally, that R I P is a dynamic resource undergoing continuous improvement. And will serve as a cornerstone for initiatives that enhance Boulder's wildfire resilience for years to come. And with that, I'll hand it over to Paul, who's got some much more exciting slides with feet on the ground.
I don't know about that. Good evening, trustees, good to be here again. I'm Paul Dennison, the Wildland Fire Senior Program Manager at Open Space. We've met a few times and it's great to be back and I'll try to be brief uh in deference to your time and the other presenters tonight. So uh I will resist the urge to tell you all about the fuels management, planning and implementation that will be happening in twenty twenty five. And I look forward to seeing you all for our field trip on May ninth, where we'll get to uh talk a lot more about fuels management and the wildland urban interface. But I thought that the best way to talk about uh a, a highlight project uh that's representative of many efforts uh related to risk reduction in the wildland urban interface is to talk about a really illustrative project from twenty twenty four. That involves integrating the work that's happening in Heather Swanson's Resource Stewardship Service Area. And uh focuses some of that work in areas in closest proximity to residential communities. So the techniques I'll be emphasizing are tree thinning, strategic grazing and perimeter mowing. And also describing how we're aiming to develop these projects in a cross boundary manner and working to engage residents on private land to have comprehensive scopes of work that cross from city management into private residential parcels. So you all will likely recall from previous presentations in Shanahan Ridge, there's quite a lot of uh ecosystem management taking place. And as Brian described, that ecosystem management has very significant risk reduction benefits. And this was one of the sites that I had identified for perimeter mowing before knowing very much about the strategic uh tall oak grass invasive management grazing that was taking place there. And when I saw the impacts of the grazing, uh, not just in fuel height reduction, but also in the encouragement of non invasive species. It uh, I'm a little embarrassed to say, but it was a bit of a revelation that there are techniques and there are opportunities to reduce risk that were outside of what I would traditionally consider in hazardous fuels management. And again, resisting the urge to go into deep detail uh just about how excited I am about the, the opportunities with grazing. But you can see here, this is invasive tall oak grass. Uh, when I took this photo, it was uh around chest height and you can probably imagine with grass that high, the type of fire behavior that you could expect. Uh, in the thirties, uh thirty foot range of flame lengths and rapid rates of spread. And the potential for uh serious uh damage to values at risk of a wide variety. This show, slide shows after two years of grazing, the differences in fuel characteristics. On the left is pregraze and on the right is after grace. And just again, to reiterate, I can't take credit for this program, uh only that I'm learning from it and hoping to apply what I'm learning and collaborate with uh Open Space staff and our Resource Stewardship Service Area to apply some of these methods in more areas and in more strategic ways. So very good risk reduction in Shanahan Ridge in the grass fuel types. This was complemented with certain areas of perimeter mowing. The tall oak grass is only a pall to bolt the cattle at certain stages of its growth cycle. So in areas where the cows didn't graze as successfully as they did at others, we were able to apply perimeter mowing to ensure that fuel characteristics were reaching the target conditions. Especially in the crucial zone closest to residential property. This aerial photo shows an example of an area that was grazed a little less intensely, but where perimeter mowing was a good complementary technique to reduce wildfire risks. And then this area has a very good legacy of forest ecosystem management and selective thinning and forest restoration. In addition to the tall oak grass grazing and the targeted perimeter mowing that took place in this area. I worked with others in the Resource Stewardship Service Area to design and implement a second entry or a reentry again in the area closest to residential homes. And it's that area that I'm most interested in developing projects that complement all of the outstanding work that's happening at the landscape scale. that complement all of the outstanding work that's happening at the landscape scale to reduce risk. So weaving some of those multimodal or mixed methods of reducing risk and managing hazardous fuels. A good example of a project in 2025 that is going to be beginning implementation relatively soon is in the Wonderland Lake area, where many of us met for the first time, and which was a perimeter mowing site for 2024. That project area is evolving into a more comprehensive risk reduction project or a set of strategies. So on this map, you can see Wonderland Lake itself at the center and the residential communities to the north and the south of Wonderland Lake. The bright green lines were the areas selected for perimeter mowing in 2024, and that will be continued into 2025. The light yellow line with vertical lines inside of it has been proposed for strategic grazing. And this is a proposal that's been met with a lot of excitement from our ecological staff, highlighting that there are really great benefits beyond risk reduction in using grazing as a technique to manage fuels. And then the brownish color in the southern portions of this map, that's parks and recreation land. They're more natural areas, not the irrigated turf and more playground-style parks that are some of the properties they manage. There are quite a lot of junipers within the home ignition zone of the residential parcels adjacent to parks and recreation land, also other coniferous vegetation that should be managed. So Open Space and Mountain Parks is partnering with Boulder Parks and Recreation to develop a prescription that crosses our managed areas with theirs. And we're also working with currently five, but hopefully soon to be more of the HOAs in the Wonderland Lake area. And our goal is to reach a level of engagement so that we can write a vegetation and fuels management prescription that more or less ignores jurisdictional boundaries. So that the grass management on Open Space and the juniper and coniferous tree vegetation management on Parks and Rec can just blend seamlessly into similar prescriptive standards on private land. And with that, I will just reiterate my excitement to see you all in the field on May 9th and talk more about fuels management in the Wild and Urban Interface. Thank you.
Last slide. Last slide for you. Whoops, there we go. So next steps, George's got a big lift for RIP planning. We are going to do the work Paul just described. We'll bring in new seasonal to support that work. We're looking at ways to enhance procedures and coordination around wildfire prevention and awareness, thanks to Giles and reminding us about that. That's more of a citywide effort, but it's certainly something we've written down and going to work on this year, which is a good segue to the next item, which is in April, you'll be hearing about the Lake Staff Management Project. You'll get a good, robust update there. As Paul said, we'll be seeing you in the field May 9th. And we plan to come back for this program to give you another update in Q4. So we're thinking we'll do Q1, Q4, two-touch until you're sick of us. Got a couple of thought-provoking questions here, but happy to take any other questions you have.
Thanks. I know this is a hot topic. What questions do we have for the staff here? Go ahead, Sarah.
What kind of animals will you be using for the grazing in Wonderland Lake?
Cows. It's a dangerous environment for goats and sheep with mountain lions and other predators.
I was wondering about that. I live right up there, and I go up frequently. And there's a group of deer that are up there. They migrate sort of back and forth over to my yard and then back up to the mountain. Will they, how do the cattle and the deer interact?
That's a really good question. We were discussing that exact topic with one of the wildlife ecologists at Open Space this morning. And based on the timing of the graze in spring, the thoughts of our wildlife ecology staff was that there wouldn't be a lot of interaction. I'm not very versed in the movement of deer, but the cattle would be contained with temporary electric fencing. And the wildlife ecologists we were speaking to didn't have concerns that the deer would have any interference or displacement caused by...
I'm not worried about this particular group of deer.
Oh, are they a nuisance? And that case...
We're going to put them on your yard just during the grazing season.
Nothing deters them. They're interesting. I have a video of one talking with me, really coming up very close with me and interacting with me. And I'm sure they'll get along fine with the cattle. I'm curious about, I am curious about, speaking of my yard, I had, what are your public-private partnerships? We've been hearing about the inner-city and the various organizational partnerships. I was, for example, landscapers. When we're talking about private residential, the landscapers have businesses. I mean, they're all going to be rolling up in droves with their trailers and doing a lot of yard work for everybody. Is there any kind of incentive or outreach or ideas for that?
Yeah, that's a really good question. Our Climate Initiatives Department, along with Boulder Fire Rescue's Community Risk Reduction, are working on a project to identify low flammability or low volatility plant species, and also develop training materials and programs, not only for residents, but also for landscaping outfits and companies so that there's more education around techniques that are fire-wise. So that's underway and would be a good question for Boulder Fire Rescue or Climate Initiatives. They've been the leads on that effort.
And I'll just say, actually, the planning effort, your old group that you used to interact with a lot is taking on some code updates in relationship. And they're going to be touching upon and working with council over the next few months on plantings and any ordinances that the city might want to entertain to call out either encourage certain plantings or discourage other ones through ordinance. So that effort led by city planning is also happening.
Our utilities department also had RFP recently to get a couple of vendors basically on retainer for post-fire immediate needs and stabilization. So making a connection that way as well.
My other curiosity is around technology. How comfortable are we with AI tools as we look at our app for evaluation and assessment? And how far ahead are we? This is more, should we have a fire? Are we looking, and I don't know which department this is, but my friends in the Palisades are starting to look at drones that can come in and bring water in high winds. They aren't harmed, given that high winds are one of the biggest issues that we're looking, or the highest risk issues that we're looking at. I'm curious what kind of next, next new age technology plans you have or you're looking at.
I'll start with the early detection. That's one where we can use cameras and artificial intelligence to find smoke and alert us. And we worked with Pano on that. So they have a human intervention piece. So the machine can tell you, alert, and then the human can look and then decide if they want to alert us. What we found out is there was just way too many false positives. And even when it was a real wildfire, we already knew well in advance of the system alerting us. So Boulder being right on the edge of the urban interface here with so many people outside at all times, that's really reliable early detection technique that seems to do better than AI and cameras to date. But we're still researching that as an opportunity. I don't know about drones moving water and other things around.
That would be a good question for Boulder Fire Rescue. I haven't heard of any thrilling ideas for artificial intelligence. There isn't an all-electric fire engine. So who knows in another couple of years what sort of breakthroughs there will be.
I'll tell you it's coming because I know the people that are investing in it. And yeah, it's a fun city. It's a fun time to live in, where we're talking about cattle grazing, and we're talking about drones and high winds and all at the same time. And of course, humans are going to beat AI. I mean, of course.
Go ahead, John.
Thinking about that map you showed at the beginning and the different areas of the city where we're doing, you know, various forms of mitigation. On the west side of the city, it felt like a pretty narrow strip where we're doing mitigation, right? And I think we heard from some community members who live on the west side of the city who are feeling, you know, understandably nervous, right? Looking at those large swaths on the west side of the city where we may not be doing a lot. Do we have any plans in the future? Or at least, I guess, to answer question one, right? I would love to learn more about, you know, what our plans are to do more mitigation to the west of the city. Because my understanding is also that usually fire would move from west to east, you know, if it was to start there.
Yeah, there are quite a few plans and a few factors to consider in the northern portions of the western Wild and Urban Interface. It's grassland-dominated, so fairly narrow strips of fuels management can be quite effective. Also, and it might just not have displayed all that persuasively on the map, but there are quite a large number of forestry treatments all throughout the landscape west of Boulder, and more specific focus on areas and opportunities in closer proximity to residential communities. But this is really complementing a holistic landscape-scale strategy. So that's something that I hope we can really dive into on the May 9th field trip to talk specifically about the different portions of the western Wild and Urban Interface and what projects are implementation-ready and where our planning efforts are because virtually every block of western Boulder is in some stage of planning or implementation.
Yeah, I'm happy to learn more and see more convincing maps. And I also think, you know, educating the community on that would be great. You also mentioned prairie dogs. Are we actively, you know, like using that as a technique to mitigate fires? Or is that just a happy accident?
No, we're not actively using them. And calling it a happy accident would even probably not be my word choice, but it's very effective barriers to wildfire spread. And it's just recognizing the influence that it has on potential wildfire.
So we're not actively putting prairie dogs places to mitigate fires? Okay, thank you. Just wanted to make sure.
Go ahead, Harmon.
So Paul, that picture, the pair of pictures you showed of the invasive oak grass on the left and then the greener, same hillside on the right with the more native grasses, were they taken at the same time of the year?
I want to double-check, but very similar times of year. And that's something that makes tall oak grass especially hazardous as a fire fuel is that it cures very early in the season. And the grasses that are being encouraged to reestablish are, I'm going to mix this up, warmer-season grasses that cure later in the season. So it reduces the amount of time in the year that they're available as burnable fuel.
Yeah, I mean, I've had this ongoing conversation with Brian for like a year now about, you know, you can't irrigate all the mountain park areas. So how do we try to make it more resilient? So I'm always interested when we can actually see a methodology that gets us there because we can only, in those areas, get what comes out of the sky in terms of keeping it wet. So, you know, that's really cool. And I hope you guys, you know, keep looking for ways to do stuff like that. You know, one thing that I wanted to ask you about is there's a program that private property owners can take advantage of where if they do thinning, they can avail themselves on a vacant parcel of a residential tax classification. Or not a residential, but they can use the agricultural tax classification, which is a huge advantage. In Colorado counties, people are paying a ton of money right now for holding vacant land. It gets taxed at like 29%, where your residential tax rate is 6.4%. And so, you know, if you have a 20-acre parcel with nothing on it, assessor says it's worth half a million dollars, you know, that's suddenly a $12,000 a year liability if it's classified as vacant. So do you have any thoughts on how, you know, this, you know, you might be able to encourage people to take advantage of some of these private thinning opportunities so that they can take advantage of this different tax classification? If you think about it, you know, you're a property owner. You've got this piece of property. It's got a forest on it. We've got tons of people up every canyon who have private property that's closer to the road mostly than the federal land, right? And if these folks are just paying and paying and paying, and the county's gotten pretty aggressive about reassessing, you know, it could be a really great opportunity for them to say, "Well, you know, at some point, I ought to probably do a thinning project because if my whole property burns, it's going to be worth a lot less." And they just need that one little thing to push them over the edge. Like you could save 10 grand a year out of the 12 you're paying right now if you could have a different tax classification. So is that something that you guys know anything about? Are you interested in looking into?
Yeah, I have a lot of experience with the, it's the Forest Agricultural Tax Credit and considers firewood as an agricultural product. From my experience, it ends up being around cost-neutral. So it does require a little bit of a stewardship instinct because the cost of implementing the forest management plan on the property and burning the slash piles or disposing of the biomass and then hauling away the firewood, that tends to usually equal about the tax savings. But it's a great program. I believe 40 acres is the minimum threshold. So it's not, it's not a comprehensive solution to forest management on private lands. But I'm glad you're aware of it. And I think it would be an interesting area of promoting forest management in the western portions of the county and private lands. And I've always been curious about trying to group smaller parcels together and see if a collaborative set of landowners would be eligible as well. So that's something that we should maybe discuss with our county counterparts or the Colorado State Forest Service to see if there's opportunities to enhance or accelerate.
Yeah, I mean, I'd just say one more thing about this. You know, I hear all the great public-private work that you're doing around the Wui parcels and getting folks to do their part on private property. And yeah, I think there is a stewardship aspect to it. But if, you know, if it's a break-even, it's a no-brainer for a lot of people because they're getting benefit from it. And, you know, if you ask your average property owner who's sitting on land, you know, "Would you like to spend your money on a thinning project to protect your investment or give it to the government?" Chances are, they're going to say, "You know what? I'd actually like to do that thinning project." But they're probably not aware of it. And so as you get into that public outreach in, you know, the western Wui and up the canyons adjacent to OSMP lands that we have, I think it would be a great thing to just mention it to people, you know, explain it to people because probably don't know anything about it.
That's duly noted. Thank you.
Okay, I know we're running out of time, and we have one more topic. Hopefully, you'll be willing to stay after 9:00. So I know people have waited. I have two things I want to bring up on this topic. The interactive, well, first of all, is this deck going to be made public? Because I think there's some good information on it. And yeah, I think that would be helpful. The interactive, making the interactive map public, I think you're going to use like BI to get that data and have that all available to people. I'm not sure, it says the site's in progress.
Yeah, right now, it's being developed. We're starting to use it internally, but the goal is there'll be a public-facing tracker for sure. It's called for in the CWBP. The CWPP actually gave us a framework for what that tracker could look like. We're sort of customizing it, but that's, the full intention is the public will be able to track along with us all the progress we're making. And when I say us, I mean the full city, not just Open Space.
Yeah, makes sense. And then I guess the other thing is a comment that John made was educating the public about what we do, because we do a ton. And but people react from a very emotional viewpoint of fear, right? And so they're afraid of their houses burned down. They're afraid of all of these things, you know, these major events that have happened or here or elsewhere. But they feel that we're not doing anything. And so that's, you know, part of like educating the community. Like, we're doing all these different things. And so I'm just going to make a suggestion. Like, if the city could have a five-minute YouTube video that we pay some super smart undergrad to put together of all the things that we're doing, not every single project, but all the different work that we're doing. And it is on the landing page, and we say, and, because I talk to people all the time, like, "What are you doing? And do you do grazing?" I'm like, "Yes, we do do grazing." You know, "Do you do this?" I'm like, "Yes, we do this." But so I don't know that they have like a one easy place to access all. There's a ton of information where they could digest it. Like, you know, I think you had nine touchpoints on my tenure of when we've talked about wildfires. So I know the things that you're doing. And I try to communicate that to people who approach me about like, "What are we doing?" And I'm like, "I could tell you this is what OSMP is doing." And I'm like, "I could tell you this is what OSMP is doing." But I know that there's a bigger picture of what the city is doing and then also what the county is doing. So it would be great to be able to disseminate all that information, condense it down and disseminate it. And, you know, it's a $2,000 grant. We pay somebody super smart to put this together and it would just go a long way. The other thing that I wanted to bring up is like, how do we respond to the criticism like what we heard earlier in the meeting that we're not addressing human ignition? Because we're, you know, we're doing all these other things. And I know that we have laws against camping on open space. We have laws against fireworks. We have laws against smoking on open space, like, but, but humans are humans. And like locking down open space for nine months out of the year is not an option under that proposal. It's just not an option. And so I just wonder like, how would we, and I'm not saying that we need to talk specifically about the issues raised, but how do we generally talk about like the criticism? Like, "Oh, we're not talking about human ignition." Are we not talking about human ignition enough?
Yeah, well, first of all, I think I said it last month too, and I think Giles visited us, that we, I think that is an area we could do more of. Yes, I mean, every day, our rangers go out, that's the first thing they do in the mornings. They team up and look for unsanctioned camping, illegal camping on open space. That's part of their everyday core duties. So, I mean, that's almost like a central morning function every day. So yeah, that, there's a lot of work that's going. You said we have ordinances in place that make all those things illegal. But can we do more? Yes. And we can do more around education, communication, visitor awareness. Those are things that we're brainstorming about and taking suggestions that we get from Giles and the community groups. Hopefully, putting in something a little bit more lasting, like a communications plan. That could be variable messaging boards during high-risk days. Signage could be, you know, some solution to that. We already do severity patrols, so in certain high-risk days, Boulder Fire Rescue and our rangers partner in that, there's severity patrols going on throughout the city with our wildfire teams. So I think it's a mixture of continuing to do what we do, enhancing what we do, and could we do more? Is there some gaps of, especially around the communications that we could do more of? Yes. And I think, you know, that is something that we're very open to continuing to hear suggestions, brainstorming. And that is also a partnership that, it's just not one department's area. It's City Communications probably takes the lead on that. Boulder Rescue, Fire Rescue has a role in that, open space. But we recognize that it's, some of that stuff's not explicitly called out in the CWPP. And maybe that's what's generating this encouragement. So I think it is continue, enhance, look for gaps and fill them in.
And I'll point out too, that it was, it was a gap in the CWPP. It was mentioned earlier in the, that it is a cohesive strategy that wasn't implemented. We, as curators of the inventory of projects, have identified ignitions as a topic. And we've grouped those recommendations. And since it's a dynamic, basically a dynamic portfolio, we're adding projects that are associated with ignitions and we can prioritize. I mean, it's up to us and the committees to prioritize acting on these. So we've identified them. They're already listed in the RIP inventory and we can expand on that. And as we, as we start implementing these, we can focus on them. And it is a biggie. And it's a really hard one because, you know, detection cameras don't, don't prevent ignitions. And it's already underway once it's ignited. So we're, you know, we're wrestling with the dynamics of that. But I think the system is in place to monitor and promote related projects, if that makes sense.
Okay, thank you. Are we okay staying late and going through the next topic?
What we could do is do the presentation. If you feel like you've got questions that you don't want to stick around for, we would be happy to entertain questions and provide written answers to them over the next month or so too. So there's a couple of ways we can do this, but I would very much like for Casey to be able to do her presentation, then you can all take a pulse for what you want to do beyond that.
Thank you. And I know that we, this is such a big topic, but we've got a couple more touchpoints, including a field trip. So I'm going to give Casey her due here.
Yeah, great.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, gents. Really appreciate it. While Casey's making her way up, I'll just kind of set the tone here for, we're going to be highlighting our planning and design workgroup projects. This came out of, Michelle, I actually think it might have been you that specifically asked for, I think through the budget process, but it also was reiterated in a prior retreat, is can we start to see daylight what you're thinking about future projects? So the only one thing that I think Casey will touch upon, but I want to emphasize before she gets rolling, is that we, when we do an inventory of all of our ongoing services, our actions and our projects, in any given year, there's hundreds of them. There's over 200, between 200 and 300 in every given year. And a lot of, and some of those have planning aspects to them. I mean, you got to plan out what you're going to do. So there's a difference between a lot of our projects that we're doing and what we kind of determined to be a project that rests within our planning and design workgroup. So this, we're going to be talking about a small subset of project work that we're going to be undertaking over the next six years that our planning and design workgroup is going to be the lead in instigating. And I think those are the projects that tend to have most of the community engagement, a lot of the board engagement and that sort of. And, and so we're looking forward to presenting this to you. And some of these projects ultimately show up in budgets as well. And some of our past planning projects, you'll be able to correlate with, "Oh yeah, I remember seeing that in the CIP" or whatever. So we're really excited about this effort because Casey has led a very successful effort working internally to sort of daylight our best guess of what the horizon looks like for her workgroup. So with that, I'll turn it over to Casey.
You can go to the next slide, Leah. So for tonight's purpose, I'm just going to give some real brief context around the planning and design program area. I'll describe the approach and the considerations taken for developing the work plan, so a little bit of description of that internal process Dan just mentioned. And then I'll provide an overview of the projects on the six-year horizon. So the planning and design program area is really, we develop department guidance and policy that provides direction for how OSMP integrates the open space purposes described in the charter. So just to give a little flavor of the projects within the planning and design program area, these projects often have a degree of complexity associated with them. They're interdisciplinary and require internal collaboration and capacity. These projects often have a heightened community expectations around them. And so we need to, they require careful coordinated community engagement as well as board and city council. And these efforts are often multi-year. So the program can be distilled into two main strategic services. So there are OSMP planning efforts related to the management of OSMP planning lands, OSMP lands. And then there's also citywide and regional planning efforts in which OSMP has interests. And so just to break down a little bit further the types of planning related to OSMP lands, we can generally break it down into two overarching categories. So there's planning that's done at the system-wide scale. And then there's planning that's done for a specific geographic area. So examples of system-wide planning include our master plan, some of our system-wide management plans, and a recent, you know, e-biking activity assessment is an example of that. And then while much of our system-wide management planning supports immediate action, sometimes additional site-specific planning is recommended in some of our system-wide plans. And so this can occur as part of a larger geographical area, so as part of a trail study area or integrated site plans, or it can, you know, be property-specific. So a recent Four Chambers Por Farm concept plan is an example of that. So the other service, I think this one's relatively self-explanatory. OSMP exists in the context of the Boulder Valley and the city of Boulder. And so we participate in citywide and regional planning efforts. Some recent examples are the Boulder to Erie Regional Trail. We also had the Boulder to Lyons Bike Way. And I think just something important to note about this service is that these projects are most often led by other partner, other peer agencies. And so in regards to our approach for work planning, we just continue to allocate a relatively similar portion of the planning and design workgroup capacity each year towards this. So we've generally found that while the projects do vary from year to year, the workload does remain relatively stable over time. So our focus this year then really is on the six-year planning horizon on projects related to the management of OSMP lands. And Dan gave a light touch on this. This is not the whole departmental work plan. We're part of, you know, we're one of 13 workgroups. And there are other projects that are related to planning efforts that do go on. So I'm just transitioning to how we went about identifying the work plan. So we did work really closely with the director's team and we took into account citywide and departmental planning guidance. And then we also identified some other evaluation criteria we considered. So focusing in on the citywide and departmental guidance, this includes the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan, the city strategic plan, and our departmental plans, like our master plan and other system-wide management plans that often call for additional planning. The other considerations identified were organizational capacity, whether we knew there was community interest in a project, and staff input. Like Dan said, we led a pretty robust internal engagement opportunity. Input was heard from across the organization just to ensure that all aspects and perspectives were considered. We also considered budget and relative importance and urgency. And so then we categorized the six-year work plan into three categories, immediate, short, and midterm. And so for the immediate category, so for the next one to two years, this first, oh, Leah, can you go back one slide, please? Thanks. We're going to continue our efforts on the Four Chambers Por Farm site. So we're going to continue our planning and design for the interpretive experience. I know we've recently brought to you the strategic, the citywide strategic plan, Action 7C and multimodal access. We'll be combining that with other multimodal efforts that are going on, including what was called for in the Climate Solutions Plan, highlighting slacklining and zip lining or lining activity assessments, voice and site program minor enhancements, really a focus on education and outreach predominantly there. And the Flagstaff Operational Management and Safety Project that's going on, placeholder for a Phase 2 if needed, in case there's any management strategies that come out of that plan that require more planning or community engagement. And then we have Wood Brothers and Wonderland Lake, which are just a finer-scale design, planning and design to implement some of the ISP recommendations that came out of those. I'm not going to go into, Leah, you can go to the next slide now. I'm not going to go through this whole list, but this is the list of our citywide and regional partnerships for the next year or two. I think the one thing that's important to note is I'm only going to list these out for the next one to two years. Some of these are on longer timeframes. Some of these go on for longer than one or two years. And a lot of times, the projects really are to be determined. So this is the only one in which I really detailed that. I didn't know in the memo you had a couple more projects. So looking to the short-term, three to four years, we had a comprehensive update of the Forest Ecosystem Management Plan. That's one of our older ones from around 1999. The Tall Grass Prairie East Habitat Conservation Area Activation, an integrated site planning effort. And then an HCA Boundary Cleanup. This is really minor modifications, just cleaning that up, not big changes. And then looking out into the mid-years, we have a couple of site planning efforts, the Boulder Valley Farm and Shanahan Ranch. And then an evaluation of on-trail requirements. I know there's a little bit more description in the packet, but I figured I would just leave it to the names for this. And so, you know, when the respective time comes for each of the project's initiation, we will more comprehensively scope out each project. We're also going to explore how to accomplish these projects congruent with, you know, other planning framework goals. So, you know, what is our fiscally responsible approach to site planning? How do we right-size or use a scalpel approach, kind of updating certain planned elements without the whole plan, without updating the whole plan? And that approach was also taken in developing the six-year horizon too. I want to say that came a little bit now and will continue to evolve in the future. And then, you know, just continuing to evolve how we update our plans to integrate the recommendations that are going to come out of this six-year planning horizon and keep our plans living, dynamic documents. So that's kind of an effort that we will explore as we will implement this work plan over the next six years. So, you know, as we said, you know, tonight's purpose really was a really high-level overview of the next six years. We will be returning to the board during, you know, the initiation of these projects, as we scope them out, learn a little bit more, put some sideboards on them. And we'll also return to the board. As we said, all these projects have usually a board or council component or community component, so we'll return to the board, you know, as input and action are desired or required when we begin them. So that is all I had for you. I tried to go fast. I hope I didn't talk too fast.
You did great, Casey. Appreciate that. I know that you had to wait all evening for your turn. I am going to propose that, because I think some of these projects might come up in the budget discussions, I'm going to propose that if you have any questions on Casey's presentation, that you hold the, or email them, or hold them for when they're relevant, when we talk about the budget. Does that sound okay? Does that sound okay to you, Casey?
Yeah.
That they could come later?
That'll work.
Unless you want to stay later. And we have childcare issues too, so.
I do think it was really comprehensive and complimentary what you shared in the packet and then what you shared today. So I don't even have any questions yet or right now. I feel like this was a really good laying foundation, laying a good foundation for us. Yeah, and I do have childcare issues too, so thank you, Michelle.
Yeah. And yeah, so, yeah, thank you for actually putting this together too, because I was the one who asked for it.
Yeah.
Thank you. Meeting is adjourned at, oh, sorry, you've got five minutes.
One quick promotion. Four Chambers Por Farm, we heard a lot of interest in community members being involved. We're going to be kicking off our first engagement window for generating ideas of what stories should be told along the interpretive trail. And that is Friday, March 21st in the afternoon at the Penfield Tate Building, Municipal Building. We're holding it in-person and an opportunity for community members who want to share ideas with us, we're going to be there.
Yeah, and the engagement window did open. It opened on Monday online, so the online is available right now. And the outreach went out. And then the, yeah, the in-person is on the 21st.
Great.
Anything else, Dan? Okay, sorry to cut you short. You don't even get your five minutes. Okay, now the meeting is adjourned at 8:56. Thank you.